The November 29th, 2021 Lynn County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will come to order. Can we have a roll call of commission members by the recording secretary, please?
Tatterback?
Here.
Dubois?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Grenness?
Present.
Here.
Coontz?
Here.
Eilers?
Here.
The following members of the Planning and Development Department are here with us tonight. Charlie Nichols, Director, and Jesse Black, Recording Secretary. An agenda and order of tonight's meeting is located on the table near the entrance of this room. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet, also located on that table. If you would like to make a comment, please check the box on the attendance sheet indicating so. I will acknowledge anyone wishing to make a comment on the case on tonight's agenda. When called, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and make your comment. If you are attending this meeting virtually, please unmute your phone and slowly and clearly... Actually, that's not accurate. If you're attending virtually, you will have to send your comments in either through the chat or through email to Charlie. Please be respectful of others who may be trying to speak and limit your time to five minutes or less on your comments. Thank you. We will begin with our regular agenda. The first and only item on our agenda today is case number JR21-0008, rezoning from agricultural, Ag, to agricultural with a renewable energy overlay, RE-Ag. Our presentation will be by staff, Charlie Nichols.
Thank you, Tina. Welcome to our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to discuss the Coggan Solar case. So as Tina said, and I'll go over this again, if you would like to make a comment at the microphone after I am done with my presentation, there's a signup sheet in the back. Please sign your name and address and mark that you would like to speak. I will then give those sheets to Tina during public comment, and she will call you up by name, one by one, and that's just to be more efficient, so people aren't all going to the microphone all at once. Can everyone hear me okay back there? Great. If you are participating on GoToWebinar virtually and you would like to make a comment, you can type that comment into the GoToWebinar chat or email it to plan-dev@lyncounty.org. That is D-E-V underscore D... P-L-A-N, excuse me, underscore D-E-V@lyncounty.org. I will then read those comments submitted by email or in the chat after the public comments up at the microphone. Couple housekeeping items. We have three exits here. There's an exit to my right here, an exit just through the doorways, and then the exit most of you came in up by the front of the building. Restrooms and drinking fountain are right behind us in the hallway. And then if we do, if we're still going strong at 8:30, I will call a 15-minute intermission for people to stretch their legs and use the restroom. All right, the meeting order for tonight. So the first will be staff presentation, which I'm currently starting now. After staff presents, the applicant will have a chance to make a presentation if they wish. We will then have questions from the commissioners for the staff or applicant. After that, I will give a summary of all of our public comments we have received to date. We will then go into our public comment period. Like I said, we'll read names off the sign-in sheet. We will read virtual comments. We will then have an open comment period. If you decide that you would like to speak, but you hadn't previously signed up, this would be your chance to come to the microphone and give your comments. We will be taking a tally of questions asked. So if you have a specific question that could be answered by staff or the applicant that you asked during your public comment, I will write it down, and then at the end of our public comment period, I will give all the questions to the chair to then go over and ask for answers from the staff or applicant. That's so that we don't get into a back-and-forth on individual questions, but can kind of do them in batch at the end. After the public comment period, there will be a closing statement from staff and/or the applicant. The commission will go into deliberation, and then there will be a motion and a roll call, also known as a vote. The options for the planning commission will be to recommend approval of the project, recommend denial of the project, or to table the project to come back and do this again at a later date and request more information. This is case JR21-0008. The proposal is to rezone land from agricultural to agricultural with a renewable energy overlay district. The applicant is Coggan Solar LLC, and the project area is about 750 acres. The subject parcel is designated as AA, that's agricultural area, on the Lynn County Rural Land Use map. The surrounding properties are zoned agricultural. And the rezoning, in case you didn't know, is to allow for the construction of a utility-scale solar facility generating 100 megawatts of power using approximately 640 acres of solar panels. The applicant is Coggan Solar LLC. Clonera is the parent company. The project would sell power to SIPCO, Central Iowa Power Cooperative, for a period of 20 years. The project would continue to sell power to either SIPCO or another utility off-taker for 10 to 15 years after that. The project will utilize solar voltaic modules, also called PV modules, to convert sunlight into direct current electricity, and battery storage is not proposed as a part of this project. The project will use approximately 325,000 PV modules. A fence will be required around the entire project area. This is part of federal regulations on utilities. Inverters will be used throughout the site to convert the direct current to alternating current before sending it to the substation. The project is located approximately 2.7 miles west of Coggan. And please bear with me here. I'll be taking drinks throughout this. It is water. So I'll go through a series of maps here. This is the location. You can see it really butts up to Delaware County. That's why the top of that map is blank. The land use is agricultural area. As I mentioned, this is all the surrounding land use. The zoning is agricultural. This is an aerial view of the project. You can see it's characterized by farmland, rural residences. These are all of the parcels involved in the project. Topography and steep slopes. There is a little bit of rise and a little bit of slopes in the project. It is not an entirely flat project area. And there are some wetlands and some identified floodplains and waterways within the project boundaries. This is a layout of where the panels are proposed to be located on the project site. Included here is some setbacks to the nearest occupied dwellings. I will come back to this map later on in the presentation, so I'm not going to go over the specific setback locations at this point. And I'm going to quickly go over some photos I took of the site. This was mainly to give context for anyone looking at our application online, but this will give you a general view of what the conditions of the project area are. And if you're interested, this is on our website. We do have a photo key where you can see where all the pictures were taken and the areas thereof. All right, so renewable energy rezonings are evaluated off of six standards for approval, which I will go over individually. The first standard is animal feeding operation separation requirements. This is also called a reverse setback in some cases. This is the distance for new development, the location distance that is required for any new development from existing confined animal feeding operations, also known as CAFOs. These separation distances do not technically apply to utility-scale solar projects. They are meant for residences, religious institutions, and educational institutions, basically places where people will be living or congregating. However, we did analyze it anyway. The project is located four and a half miles northeast at the nearest CAFO. That's located at 4911 Hitaga Road. The maximum separation distance required for CAFOs is 2,500 feet or approximately half a mile, so this would meet that standard. The next standard is the proposed development is not detrimental to existing agricultural uses. This project would take approximately 640 acres out of agricultural production for a period of up to 35 years. The area has been used for agricultural production since the mid-1800s based on aerial photographs. The average weighted corn suitability rating, also called CSR for the site, is 73.76. Generally, any land with 65 CSR or above has been regarded as high-value agricultural land. Additionally, over half the project area is defined in federal code as prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. Clearly, the farmland in the project area is high-value, high-quality farmland. This is a ranking of our seven comprehensive plan elements done by county residents. County residents ranked resource protection as the most important element and the most important issue facing Lynn County over the next 20 years. And resource protection includes preservation of ag land. Coming in second is alternative renewable energy, which encourages utility-scale energy production. So how do we balance these two things? There is clearly a trade-off here. We would be gaining utility-scale renewable energy, but losing for a period of up to 35 years what is clearly prime farmland. Again, this is showing the key components of those two elements which were ranked as number one and two by residents of Lynn County as the most important issues facing the county over the next 25 years. So fortunately, we are not the first jurisdiction to weigh these trade-offs between utility-scale renewable energy and prime farmland. What other counties in different parts of the country have used as tools to try and manage this trade-off, it's a two-pronged approach, an agricultural impact mitigation plan, and a vegetation management plan. So first, look over the agricultural impact mitigation plan, also known as an AIMP for short. So the AIMP identifies measures taken by the applicant to minimize potential impacts to agricultural uses of the land. Coggan Solar LLC has submitted an agricultural impact mitigation plan for this project. One of the components of this plan is drain tile identification avoidance and repair. A large concern of residents and area neighbors is damage to subsurface drainage tiles used in farming practices. With 325,000 solar panels used in this project, there will be many piles driven into the ground that has the potential to destroy or damage drain tiles. So what Coggan Solar LLC will be required to do, and what they have committed to do through this plan, is to, one, map drainage tiles pre-construction, and this would be done using a combination of existing records, hiring local tiling contractors, and then using ground penetrating radar. The project would then be designed to avoid the identified tiles. If for some reason these tiles could not be avoided, the applicant would be responsible for rerouting the drainage tiles and installing new ones. If it is also identified that construction will take place close to an identified tile and might cause damage, the applicant will be required to reinforce that tile. Similarly, if tile is damaged during the course of construction, the applicant will be responsible to repair and remediate the damaged tile as soon as possible. In addition to all of this, the local natural resource conservation service office will be requiring a drain tile mitigation and management plan that is more of a more detailed compilation of all of the factors in their agricultural impact mitigation plan. As part of the AIMP, Coggan Solar will also implement best management practices during construction. This includes invasive species prevention, soil segregation and decompaction. And what this means is they would separate topsoil from other soil during construction and then respread that topsoil, which has high-quality nutrients after that construction activity has taken place. And that will happen in the initial grading and construction phases, when foundations are installed, and when trenching activities are done. There is provision for wet weather conditions. It's very likely that during this project there will be wet weather periods, and to avoid rutting, erosion, and compaction, all construction will stop during these wet weather periods. Adaptive management will also be used during construction. If it is found that the best management practices implemented as part of this plan are not working for some reason, Coggan LLC will work with county staff to develop new practices that are better suited to the land. Temporary erosion and sediment control will also be put in place. A stormwater pollution prevention plan is required. There will be onsite inspectors required to be present as well to make sure the stormwater pollution prevention plan is being adhered to. Finally, all streams and drainage ways will be buffered throughout this project to avoid impacts to those waterways. The AIMP also identifies decommissioning activities, so this would be at the end of the project, when the project is being taken down to go back into agricultural production. A new stormwater pollution prevention plan will be developed at the time of decommissioning, as will an updated stormwater management plan. The site will also be revegetated with native prairie to stabilize the soil at that time until it can be put back into production. The second component of this is the vegetation management plan. And these two plans kind of work hand-in-hand, one to avoid damages to agricultural infrastructure and agricultural soils, and then two, to build up and stabilize that soil health over time. So the purpose of the vegetation management plan is to maintain and improve soil conditions and provide for onsite stormwater detention and to prevent wind and water erosion. Coggan Solar has also submitted a specific vegetation management plan for this project area. Stipulations of the plan include at least 70% of the site planted with pollinator-friendly seeding plan and native grasses, forbs, and sedges. And the applicant has adopted the NRCS suggested seed mix for our area. There are specific seeding installation procedures that will be followed for site preparation. There will be a cover crop seeded prior to construction to avoid compaction and erosion. For seeding, native seeding will be applied using a spreader. Wildflower and sedge seed will be broadcast last. To control noxious weeds, there will be a combination of methods used, including mowing, manual removal, and spot herbicide treatment. Last but not least, a reporting requirement will be put in place. The applicant shall hire a third-party vegetation management contractor. That vegetation management contractor will visit the site quarterly and then submit an annual vegetation management report to the county that details if the plan is being adhered to, and if things are going wrong that need to be reevaluated with that vegetation plan. So finally, we are looking at the proposed development is not detrimental to existing agricultural uses standard. Staff believes the standard has been met. While the land in the project area will be taken out of production for a period of up to 35 years, measures will be in place to mitigate negative impacts to this land and subsurface drainage tiles. Additionally, measures are in place to enhance the soil quality within the project area and to improve the agricultural resource for future agricultural and production operations. I should also mention that a condition of this case is that the rezoning, or the zoning layer expires after 35 years or whenever the project is decommissioned, whichever comes first. So that means that if they would like to keep this project going after the 35-year time period, they would have to go through this process all over again. The next standard for review is the proposed development will be served by adequate public facilities and services as set forth in a development agreement. Again, renewable energy overlay rezonings are not subject to adequate public facilities requirements because their impact on public facilities is thought to be rather low. However, due to the scope of the project, staff has analyzed this anyway. For water, the project will not consume water in the operation of the facility. The project will also be operated remotely. After construction, it is anticipated that maintenance employees or contractors will only be onsite occasionally. Additional water services will not be needed as part of this project. Similarly, for wastewater, the project will not generate waste, and the presence of employees onsite will be minimal. Additional wastewater services are not anticipated to be needed. On transportation, all roads within the project footprint will be maintained by the applicant and will be used only for maintenance purposes. It is possible that damage to county roads could occur during the transportation of materials to the site for construction. The applicant will be required to perform a pre-construction survey of all roads used for transportation. Any damage to county roads and/or culverts will be the responsibility of the applicant to fix. Fire protection. The project is within the Coggan Fire District, located approximately two miles from the Coggan Fire Station. For comparison's sake, a residential development in this zoning district would need to be within five miles of the fire station. The Coggan Fire Department is supported by other Lynn County fire departments through mutual aid agreements. The applicant shall work with the Coggan Fire District and Lynn County Sheriff to develop an emergency management plan. The Lynn County Emergency Management Authority was consulted on this and did not deem additional plans or studies necessary for this project. Stormwater management. Article 6, Section 107, 117 of the Unified Development Code requires the applicant to complete and adhere to a stormwater pollution prevention plan during construction. Additional stormwater management will be provided as part of that vegetation management plan. Despite not being subject to these requirements, staff believes the project is served by adequate public facilities. The next standard for review is the proposed development will not degrade significant environmental, ecological, or natural resources. A third-party review of environmental resources within the project boundary, which was further reviewed by county staff and contractors, identified the following. Approximately 1.17 acres of wetlands are identified in the project area. There are four streams meeting waters of the U.S. criteria identified in the project. One woodland approximately one acre in size was identified. No bald-eating or nesting or foraging habitat is present within the study limits. The following federally listed species, and these would be endangered, threatened, or candidates for endangered or threatened, were identified by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as having possible habitat within Lynn County. The Higgins-eye pearly mussel, rusty patch bumblebee, northern long-eared bat, prairie bushclover, eastern prairie fringed orchid, western prairie fringed orchid. I might have pronounced that wrong, but I'm just going to roll with that, and the monarch butterfly. An analysis of each individual species and context of the project area found that the project would have no effect on all of the listed species, with the exception of the monarch butterfly, which it is listed as having a may impact effect on. StanTech, the consultant hired by Coggan Solar, identified 50 state-listed threatened and endangered species from the Iowa DNR Natural Areas Inventory within Lynn County. The Iowa DNR, responding to a request for comment, found no site-specific records of rare species or significant natural communities that would be impacted by this project. The Iowa DNR, in responding to Coggan Solar's request for comments, also recommended that native vegetation beneficial to pollinators be established and maintained around the solar panels. The IDNR also recommended that additional studies and/or mitigation plans be required if listed species or rare communities are found during the planning or construction phases. In addition to these findings, Coggan Solar has committed to the following. There will be no large-scale removal of trees. Topsoils will not be removed from the site during development. Minimal lighting will be used onsite. Fully shielded, low-sodium pressure lights will be used at the substation, and lighting will be motion-activated instead of being on constantly. Fencing will be raised approximately 10 inches above the ground to allow small animals, reptiles, et cetera, access to the project area for foraging and habitat. Based on the above findings, the following conditions will be required by Lynn County. Wetlands shall not be altered or removed. Temporary disturbances to wetlands during construction shall be avoided to the extent possible and permitted by the U.S. ACE Corps of Engineers if unavoidable. The identified woodlands should be avoided during construction. A vegetative buffer approved by Lynn County NRCS for all named streams and open ditches with seasonal water flow shall be implemented. If listed species or rare communities are found during planning or construction, the contractor shall let Lynn County Planning and Development know immediately, and additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. At least 70% of the site shall be planted with pollinator-friendly seeding plant, which includes the use of native grasses, forbs, and sedges. And the applicant proposes that the addition of these pollinator species will mitigate the may-impact finding for the monarch butterfly. Large-scale removal of trees is prohibited. Topsoil shall be segregated and remain onsite using methods outlined in an approved agricultural impact mitigation plan. All lighting shall be shielded. Lighting shall be motion-activated whenever possible, and fencing shall be raised approximately 10 inches above ground. Some additional considerations here. The decommissioning plan has been updated to include the cost of new environmental studies and permitting at the end of the project, including a new environmental resources report. The project will also offset approximately 300 million pounds of carbon dioxide annually, which is equivalent to burning approximately 15 millions gallons of gasoline. As part of the 2019 Lynn County resolution declaring a climate crisis, the Board of Supervisors has committed to reducing countywide CO2 emissions by 45% by 2050 and increasing renewables to account for 100% of electricity generation inland county by 2050 as well. Based on these conditions and considerations, staff believes adequate measures are in place to prevent the degradation of significant environmental, ecological, or natural resources. The next standard for approval is the proposed development achieves densities and uses in agricultural areas, critical natural resource areas, rural residential development areas, and urban service areas as designated in the comprehensive plan. There is no land use map designation for renewable energy overlay zones. These zoning districts instead have their own specific set of standards that are contained within the code, and therefore this standard on densities within these areas does not apply. Our last standard for review is the proposed development is consistent with the goals, objectives, and strategies of the comprehensive plan. The first element is alternative and renewable energy. Staff believes that Goal 1, encourage and support the development and use of alternative and renewable energy sources, has been met because the project provides for the increased use of renewable energy resources within our region. Staff also believes Goal 3, identify and mitigate barriers to the development of local alternative and renewable energy resources and increase energy efficiency strategies, has been met because the project does develop local renewable energy resources. Moving on to the economic development and employment opportunities element. Staff believes Goal 2 has been met. That is, seek opportunities to diversify and expand the local employment base by providing a supportive environment for existing and new businesses, as well as entrepreneurial activities. Staff believes this is met because the project supports renewable energy production and provides new and expanding businesses with the opportunity to procure renewable energy. Staff also believes Goal 3, support and encourage a well-educated, highly-skilled, and diverse workforce to prepare for an increasingly competitive global market, has been met because the project will support green jobs. For the hazard planning element, staff believes Goal 1, identify and implement strategies to prevent the occurrence of human-made hazards, has been met because the project could potentially contribute to reducing the frequency of climate events by offsetting carbon dioxide generated through power production. Staff also believes Goal 2, reduce the risk of the loss of life, property, and economic activity as a result of the occurrence of natural and human-made hazards, has been met because this is from stormwater being managed onsite with a vegetation management plan requiring a minimum of 70% of the site to be planted with a native seed mix. For the resource protection element, staff believes Goal 1, support initiatives designed to prevent soil erosion, improve soil quality, and educate the public on the importance of healthy soils. in both urban and rural environments, has been met because the project will maintain and improve soil quality through measures including topsoil segregation and the planting of short-stature prairie on-site for the life of the project. Staff also believes goal three, strive to maintain high-quality water resources, has been met because the project will utilize stormwater management techniques through a stormwater pollution prevention plan, low-impact development practices, and a comprehensive vegetation management plan. Staff believes goal four has also been met. Address drainage and stormwater management as a regional issue and foster multi-jurisdictional cooperation because the project protects subsurface drainage tiles through adherence to an approved agricultural impact mitigation plan. For sustainable development, staff believes goal two, proactively address climate change through prevention and adaptation, has been met because the project addresses climate change through greenhouse gas reduction. Staff also believes goal three, incorporate enhanced stormwater management and erosion control practices into county development standards, has been met because the project incorporates low-impact development techniques, implements erosion and sediment controls, and uses soil restoration and protection practices during construction. We all good on the go-to webinar? Therefore, staff believes the proposal is generally in conformance with the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan. A few more notes on some specific items. The decommissioning plan has been a topic of concern, so I wanted to go over some of the contents with everyone. The purpose of the decommissioning plan is to ensure the project area is able to be returned to pre-construction conditions at the end of the project. And this plan has been reviewed and commented on by Stanley Consultants, the county-hired contractor, to help review these submittal documents. It is the responsibility of the project owner, not the landowner, to decommission the project, as well as notify the county when decommissioning will take place. The estimated decommissioning costs include hard costs, soft costs, and costs associated with road repair, potential road damage with the decommissioning of the site at the end of the project. The plan will be updated annually to ensure decommissioning costs and salvage values are accurate based on industry standards and experience. Additionally, every two years, the recycling costs will be updated by a licensed engineer. Every five years, the salvage value will be audited by a licensed professional familiar with the solar industry. The current plan assumes a one-point-five annual inflation factor for decommissioning costs. The salvage value of the project will exceed the cost of decommissioning in year one. Costs will exceed salvage value in year twenty forty-three, meaning that the entire decommissioning cost will be able to be covered by the salvage value until year twenty forty-three. Decommissioning activities must commence within twelve months of the cessation of energy generation. If for some reason, energy generation stops and the owner of the project at the time is unable or unwilling to commence decommissioning projects, there is language in the plan that gives the county the ability to go on-site and access and sell the components of the project to generate funds based on the salvage value to do the decommissioning activities on behalf of the county. The PV modules and structures will be recycled at a qualified recycling facility, such as Dynamic Life Cycle Innovations in Onalaska, Wisconsin, which is about a hundred and forty miles from the project site. This cost of recycling is included in the decommissioning plan. All areas of the site will be returned to close to pre-development conditions as possible, as close to pre-development conditions as possible. And then finally, the renewable energy overlay zoning district will automatically expire at the end of the project or in thirty-five years, whichever comes first. Some additional considerations. A glint and glare study was done, which found no significant potential of glare with respect to sensitive receptors such as airports, roadways, and residences at any time period over the course of a typical year. Stanley Consultants also reviewed the study and confirmed these results using the best available data and modeling techniques. The operation and maintenance plan was also evaluated by Stanley Consultants and found to be in line with industry standards. Lynn County Planning and Development will receive a copy of all reports generated annually as part of the operation and maintenance plan. Planning and Development has also requested a minimum setback of three hundred feet from all occupied dwellings. This represents the upper range of setbacks that exist in Iowa for utility-scale solar sites. The minimum required setback is fifty, but staff has requested three hundred feet from occupied dwellings. The secondary road department will require permits for any new entrances and existing unpermitted entrances. Additionally, a road agreement with conditions related to access and maintenance responsibility during construction will be required. Construction shall be limited to the hours of seven AM to five PM unless specifically approved on a temporary basis by Planning and Development. If conditions are not adhered to by the applicant or project owner of record at any point throughout the life of the project, the Board of Supervisors may, after giving reasonable time to remedy, remove the zoning overlay district, which would then make this project unpermitted. A note on some plans and studies that weren't reviewed. You might have noticed that the economic impact analysis or property value study was not reviewed as part of my presentation. That is because the Planning and Zoning Commission focuses on what is contained within the code and the comprehensive plan, and these studies fall outside of that purview. We will go over these studies when we get to the Board of Supervisors, as the Board of Supervisors takes a more comprehensive look at projects. This is that setback map again. And it might be hard to see here, but they are showing they are at least three hundred feet from all occupied dwellings with their panels. All right, the following alternatives may be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now, remember, the Planning and Zoning Commission does not have final approval authority for this project. That will be the Board of Supervisors. So the Planning and Zoning Commission can either recommend approval of the proposal, subject to staff conditions, recommend denial of the proposal, or refer the proposal back to the applicant for additional review and information. Staff is recommending alternative one, recommend approval, subject to the conditions of the staff report. We are now at this point in the meeting. I have given my staff presentation, and is now the chance for the applicant to give a presentation if they wish to do so. Would the applicant wish to give a presentation? Okay, they think they figured it out. We will keep working on it, though, if it has not been figured out. I'm actually gonna have you go to that microphone, if that's okay with you, and you can use that clicker.
Yep.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? My name is Tom Fitzgerald. I'm a Director of Development at Clonera. I'm joined here tonight by Mike Gallego, our Head of Construction, Jared McKee, our Head of Development, and Lane Ashton, who has been instrumental as a co-developer on this project with me. I'll start off by giving a quick introduction to Clonera. Clonera is founded in two thousand thirteen. We are a utility-scale renewable energy developer. We primarily focus on developing utility-scale solar projects and solar-plus-PV storage projects. We own, operate, and manage currently one-point-six gigawatts of solar across nine states in the US and also are in the process of constructing an additional nine hundred and forty-five megawatts in some of the existing markets in three other states as well. Just a quick overview of the Coggin Solar Project. The Coggin Solar Project is a hundred-megawatt AC facility. It's located in Lynn County, roughly two-point-three miles west of Coggin, Iowa. The target start of construction is March of twenty twenty-two. We expect the useful life of the project to last about thirty-five years, and construction will take about nine months with completion targeted for December of twenty twenty-two. The site footprint is roughly six hundred and forty acres of privately-owned land. And the power will be interconnected and sold to Central Iowa Power Cooperative via the Coggin Substation, which is identified in the northeast corner of the map in this picture here. For those of you who are not aware, Central Iowa Power Cooperative is a consortium of thirteen local cooperatives, including the Lynn County REC. And the power from the Coggin Solar Project will be sold to SIPCO. For the first twenty years of the project, one hundred percent of the power will go to SIPCO and be used locally by those thirteen distribution cooperatives. Why was Coggin selected as the primary location for a new project for SIPCO? One of the primary reasons is the available capacity on the transmission system at the Coggin Substation. It was identified that a hundred megawatts of capacity would be able to be injected into the grid at that point without triggering network upgrades that are typically very costly and are generally passed on to customers. So this was not the case in this instance, so in this case, the power will be some of the cheapest, most competitive-priced power that SIPCO has probably ever entered into. SIPCO has entered into a power contract to power, as I mentioned, purchase the power for the first twenty years of the project. One of the other primary reasons is that the site that we've identified is immediately adjacent to the substation, so there is no need for a transmission corridor or other easements to bring the power from the project to the point of interconnection. We've also engaged with multiple local landowners who are willing to enter into long-term leases with the project subsequent, so that we were able to secure enough land to build a capacity of a hundred megawatts AC. We also did extensive onsite due diligence, as Charlie referenced during his presentation, both biological resources, cultural resources, wetland delineations, hydrology studies, topography studies, geotechnical investigations, and found that the site was suitable and would not have any adverse impacts on natural or cultural resources. Some of the design features that we've included here. The project fully incorporates all of the Lynn County Renewable Energy Ordinance requirements. It will not impact any onsite wetlands and will be entirely avoiding all wetlands and floodplains. It is possible that we will need to either overhead or bore underneath the wetlands to connect the western array into the primary eastern site. That will be done in conformance with all US Army Corps of Engineer regulations and would be done through a separate permit process. I think, as I mentioned, we're avoiding all the designated floodplains and will be maintaining pre-project drainage patterns throughout the life of the project. Also, after construction, as Charlie mentioned, the project site will be vated with a native prairie vegetation, which will reduce stormwater management considerations on-site and balance the local flora and fauna by providing habitat for predation species. As you can see below, a list of some of the studies that I previously mentioned. One of the things that I would add as part of this process, there was a lot of public feedback and comments that we received throughout the project that, when working with the county, we're able to incorporate into the project, including setbacks from residences, the inclusion of the native prairie vegetation plan, the agricultural impact mitigation plan, and all of those things, I feel, have led us to develop a very balanced project that will fit well within the fabric of the community. Just want to highlight some of the primary components of the project. As Charlie mentioned, the project will consist really of three main components, the first being the solar modules. We're gonna use what's called bifacial modules, so they're basically solar modules that are imprinted between glass. So actually, so as the sun reflects off the ground, it can gather energy on the backside of the module as well. The modules are constructed in monocrystalline photovoltaic wafers. It's a very simple silicon wafer that you see in pretty much any chip that you have in any type of electronic today. The modules are designed to absorb light and not reflect them. That's how they generate electricity, is by absorbing light. None of the materials in the solar panels we'll be using on the site are hazmat materials and are PCC one-rated and have been tested by the UL organization. At the end of the project life, the panels will be sold or recycled. We expect that at the end of thirty-five years, the typical panel on the site will probably still have about sixty-five to seventy percent of its useful energy output. And in thirty years, I anticipate that there will be a very robust secondary market for these modules to be sold. If not, as mentioned, there are currently twenty-three operating recycling centers within the US, including one less than two hundred miles away from the Coggin site, at which the panels will be recycled and disposed of appropriately. So here are some photos. You can kind of see what the modules look like up close. Here's they are as they're being installed by a crew of technicians, and here they are in situ once this installation is complete on the bottom. I know some of you were able to attend the Wapalo Solar Project. I believe these two photos here are from the Wapalo Project, just to give you a sense of what a solar installation would look like in Iowa. The second component of the project is the solar tracker. The modules be affixed to steel pipes with arms that are driven by a push-pull mechanism and a small hydraulic motor. These are typically about thirteen feet in height at the leading edge, although that's really when they're at their maximum angle throughout the day as the sun is rising or setting. Typically, the elevation of the panels is about six to eight feet. For those of you who are able to make the Wapalo Site Tour, I think you noticed that the trackers move very imperceptibly throughout the day. I think they move about one degree every five to seven minutes. It doesn't really make any noise, I think, as anyone who was there can attest to. And the trackers are driven on IBMs that are pier-driven and do not require concrete foundations. The piers are spaced roughly twenty-five to thirty feet apart, given the soil conditions. So here we have some photos again of the pile driver on the top. Here's what the piers look like when they've been aligned and installed. The bottom left, you can see the panels once they're installed, and here you can see part of our technician crew after a long day's work of installing hundreds of thousands of panels at the Wapalo Site. The second, and, excuse me, the third and final component of the project are the PV power inverters. PV solar modules generate DC current, direct current electricity. The power grid uses alternating currents, so the power needs to be converted from DC to AC. That is done with power inverters. There's typically two types of inverters that are using. For those of you who attended the Wapalo Site Tour, we have a more centralized inverter, which is depicted in the top picture. Those can aggregate the power and convert it from DC to AC for approximately two megawatts. It's anticipated that the Coggin Solar Project would use a smaller technology that is referred to as a string inverter that gathers and converts the power of approximately two hundred and fifty kilowatts. The string inverters are much smaller. They're about the size of two shoeboxes next to each other, and then they are generally affixed to one of the mounting brackets on one of the tracking devices as opposed to being essentially located GPU as depicted in the top picture. Neither one of them is very audible. The string inverters in particular are very quiet. They're about the same as a hum of a refrigerator, and you can't hear them typically any more than five meters away. The power from the inverters will all be aggregated into a project substation. The project substation then will convert what is the nominal voltage of the plant, which is thirty-four-point-five KV, up to the transmission voltage to inject onto SIPCO system, which is a hundred and sixty-one kilovolt. The project substation will sit immediately adjacent to the SIPCO, the current operating SIPCO substation, and will inject the power from that via a very short transmission line, expected to be no more than a hundred meters yard long. The project substation most likely will be immediately south of the current SIPCO substation, and all of the power there will be aggregated into that and fed into SIPCO and onto the transmission system from there. That footprint is about a half acre to one acre in total. Here are some pictures of the recently completed Wapalo Solar Project. We'd be happy to provide some more images as well if you'd be interested in seeing those. As Charlie mentioned, I won't go into too many details here. We have prepared a very robust decommissioning plan as required by the Lynn County REO. The commissioning, decommissioning plan is, was prepared by a third-party consultant, and as Charlie mentioned, will be reevaluated multiple times throughout the project life and bought and against if necessary. Some of the benefits of the Coggin Solar Project is that it will be approximately a hundred and fifty-million-dollar capital investment. During construction, there will be three hundred construction jobs at peak, where we will be hiring locally as available. Two to three long-term jobs will be created post-construction for the duration of the project, thirty-five years. Those are typically on-site jobs to do maintenance, make sure that the project is secure, and any kind of ad hoc activities that the project may require. The power from the project will be used, as mentioned, by SIPCO and its distribution cooperatives, and will power approximately eighteen thousand Iowa homes. And the CO2 emission reduction from this is the equivalent of fifteen million gallons of gasoline being burned annually. Finally, the increase in Finally, the increase in property taxes will exceed the current uses by millions of dollars over the project life. At this point, I will turn it over back to Charlie. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
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 Yes, before we get into public comment, if the commission members have any questions for myself or the applicant, you can address them to us, and we'll do our best to answer them.
I've got two. So you mentioned, I want to get some verification. So the PPA, did you say that runs out after 20 years?
That's correct. That's right. I don't think his mic's on.
That's correct.
So after 20 years, what happens then? Like a contract renegotiation, or?
There's two things that could occur. One would be a contract renegotiating with SIPCO where they would continue to buy power output, or it could be sold onto the Mycel market or sold to another power utility in Iowa.
So hypothetically, if like SIPCO did not renew, right, would we have to, different substations have to be put in since that's their station there?
No, we would still inject the power at that point. We have what's called a large general interconnection agreement with SIPCO, which allows us to interject the power to that node regardless of who is buying the power.
And that's through 35 years?
That's for 35 years or beyond, yes.
Okay. Second question. So I know when we visited Wapalo, the piers were a large point of contention. So reading through this, I see the steel posts for the racking systems will be removed. In the event they cannot be removed with major, without major site disruption, Lynn County will be notified for approval to remove to a depth of 10 feet below grade. So my question would be, who determines major site disruption? Because I know a lot of folks, and I don't know, I know we had discussed and say, you know, they got to be totally removed. So I was curious how that would be made.
I think our intent there is to remove them entirely. I think we are asking for potential relief in the event that there was some unforeseen condition that would result in more disruption to remove them than to otherwise leave them in place and cut off at 10 feet below grade. I don't expect that circumstance to arise, but in the event that it does, we would need to consult with Lynn County planning and staff and get their buy-in on whatever it was that we were trying to leave in place before we would be able to do so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Charlie, I think this would probably be a question for you. Do we know the proportion of the crops from the designated areas that are currently being used for energy production already, meaning most likely for ethanol?
Do we know the amount of crops being used for ethanol production?
Yeah, the 640 acres that would be taken out of production, do we know how much of those is actually already being used for energy production? So this would really just be offsetting energy production with a different type?
Unfortunately, we don't know the end market for those crops at the moment. We just know they're in production, but we can't say if they're used for ethanol, used for feed, or used for some other purpose.
I have a question regarding the materials used. Having put up a couple myself, I sourced in Canada or North America, is that possible anymore? I know there's been a lot of changes in that, and you got the inverters, you got the trackers and the panels. Are any of them domestic or even North America?
Mike, feel free to jump in here if I'm speaking out of turn, but I believe the tracker systems are manufactured in the United States. The modules for this project, I believe, will be sourced from India. At this point, the U.S. module manufacturing and inverter market are not competitive enough with the global market. Obviously, I wish that we could buy locally sourced products because we would.
Understand.
George?
Where is this, the money coming to fund this project? I heard numerous different things, and I want to hear it from the horse's mouth.
The money coming to fund this project will be a combination of funds. Most likely, it will be some...
I can't, I can't decipher what you're saying.
Well, so we're going to go to the, to a bank and get a loan to fund?
What's he saying?
A good portion of the project?
I want to pull him up.
Oh, sorry.
He's saying that it's going to come from a bank.
We're going to get a loan to fund a good portion of the project, and then we'll be using our own internal funds as well.
Is that coming from the Bank of China or where? That's what I've heard.
We have no affiliation with China. So no, it will be sourced from a U.S. bank?
If it's coming from the Bank of China, makes a difference. Because I don't want...
They have no connection with anyone in China, is what they said.
Chinese controlling our electricity.
They have no connection with anyone in China, Mr. Maxwell, is what he's saying.
I think, is your concern that the bank that you will be taking the loan out of, from, will they have, do we have any ideas as to who the bank will be?
I don't think that the bank has been identified at this point. We will not be with the Bank of China or any government-backed Chinese bank or entity. We have no affiliation with any Chinese government entities.
What do you say? No affiliation with any Chinese entities, government entities?
And the banks that they come from will not be backed by any governments?
And I'd remind the commissioners, when you're making comments back and forth, to speak into the mic as...
The bank that they get from will not be backed by any government, period.
Say it into the mic. Yeah, and say it on the mic. Sorry. You're repeating it. Say it in the mic, please.
Just repeating what I told him, is that the bank that they will be associating with will not have any backing by any government.
Charlie, on the third document from the consultants, that was on, it's on the website, it addresses details in the application, like it goes through the application section by section, it has read, you know, their suggestions. Were all of those items addressed?
I believe you're referring to the operation and maintenance plan, and yes, all of those items were addressed and incorporated into a new updated operation and maintenance plan. And those comments, those red line comments were from Stanley Consultants.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I have a follow-up question. So hypothetically, let's say before the construction phase or even after the construction phase, obviously, there's legally binding contracts, right? So hypothetically, I'm a landowner, and I say, well, this has completely changed from what I thought. You know, at what point, or we pass that point where they can say, I want to be excluded from this, and then we have to go through a process like this again?
Well, I believe that we would not have to go through this process again if we were to reduce the footprint of the project, only if we were looking to expand it. So if one of the participating landowners, for one reason or the other, decided not to participate, or Clonera no longer wanted them to participate in the project, they would just be relieved from doing so, and we would proceed.
Gotcha.
And on the county side, so Tom's correct, if the footprint is reduced and everything else is staying the same, they would not need to do another rezoning. If they were changing it substantially, increasing the size, adding, say, battery storage, they would need to then go through a new process to have that approved.
Sure. And then hypothetically, you get halfway through the construction phase, and you realize Griffin's parcel is just terrible. There's some huge issues that you just can't say, we cannot feasibly build on this. What does that look like from a contract with that landowner? Do you kind of cut them out and say, y'all are done here, or how does that work?
Well, that's why we do a significant amount of investigations beforehand. So we've had our engineers and our contractor onsite who have done a litany of tests to make sure that that doesn't happen, so we don't get into a situation where we've started construction and run into an issue like that that is insurmountable. So ideally, we would identify those and carve those areas out beforehand.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Charlie, on the condition of...
Can you go closer to the mic?
Oops, sorry. On the condition of being detrimental to existing agriculture uses, is it the staff's opinion that the mitigating measures are less detrimental than if no action were taken and it was no project?
Less detrimental if no, no project was constructed, no action taken at all. Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. Obviously, this will be taking land out of production for up to 35 years, which is not an insignificant amount of time. So there is the realization that we will be losing high agricultural land, but the intent is that it's not going to be forever. The zoning district expires automatically after 35 years. We do have a plan in place to commission it, so whether or not not doing the project at all would have less impact. You know, I think you can make a case both ways. Obviously, you'd be able to keep farming it, so there would be no impact. The intent with the vegetation management plan is that the soil health is built through the project, through the life of the project, that that native prairie stays onsite and builds up the quality of the soil, so that when it goes back into production, it is of a higher quality, and you can get better yields from it moving forward. So I guess I see it both ways, and I see what you're saying, and the fact is that there will be land taken out of production for a not insignificant amount of time.
Thanks.
Charlie, while it's not directly part of this application, it is connected and using that SIPCO substation, and we've had several, there's public comments on it, and also several members coming to the commission during general public comments to address drainage issues that occurred after the last expansion of that SIPCO substation. And while they didn't intend to do it originally, it sounds like they will be expanding more. So those concerns, have those been addressed? Has the company been working in good faith to correct those? Kind of what is the status of that situation?
Yeah, so Tina is referring to the substation off Lynn Delaware Road. It's a conditional use permit. It was constructed a number of years ago, five or six maybe, I might be getting that wrong, but it was within the recent past, and some drainage tile, subsurface drainage tile was damaged during construction and has been causing issues for neighboring properties. They are in the process of trying to amend their conditional use permit to expand that substation footprint to account for this project. That drainage issue, as far as I know, has not been solved yet. We've been in communication with the neighbors that are affected by it, as well as SIPCO, and we are asking that if they do not fix it before they expand their substation, they provide a performance bond or cash and escrow to the county that would guarantee it gets fixed. But as of right now, the drainage tile issues have not been fixed. They have hired engineers to investigate the issue, but have not come up with a permanent solution for it.
Okay, so at this point, just to repeat to make sure I understand, there is not a solution at this point, but one of the things the county is asking for is, if they have not resolved it, is that they will fund a way to resolve it and that that will be required. Is that correct?
Sorry, could you repeat that?
So it has not been solved at this point, but from what you said, what the county's expecting is, if it has not been solved by the time that application goes forward, that they will have funding for it. So even if the county would have to correct it, there will be funds to do so.
Yes, so it's a conditional use permit, so ultimately, the Board of Adjustment will approve or deny it, but the staff recommendation would be to not approve it until one of two things happen. One, either it is fixed, or two, the solution is identified and cash is put up either in a bond or in an escrow account that guarantees it will be fixed within a reasonable amount of time.
Is there, and I think this is one of the big things for me, is when we say reasonable amount of time, what does that look like? Because say, we have issues with broken tiles in this program, you know, with this project, and something has to be fixed, what is a reasonable amount of time for, because it seems like this issue that with the family that's had the drainage issues, is that, is it still considered reasonable? Because here we are still talking about it. So do we have an idea as to what that reasonable amount of time is?
It's not defined in our condition. There's no, you know, 12 months is a reasonable amount of time, or six months is a reasonable amount of time. I think it would be fair to require a certain time period, say 30 days, for the applicant to respond in writing, acknowledge any sort of damage, and come up with a plan to fix it. But actual work to fix it can be dependent on contractor availability, availability of materials, so, well, it's possible to put a, like a hard deadline on, things have to be fixed by this date, that might have to be amended in the future if there are delays to contractor availability, materials. Another thing to keep in mind is, damage to drainage tiles are not always readily apparent when it happens. Oftentimes, you'll need a storm event to actually see the extent of that damage. So having a little, a little bit of flexibility for the actual final repair of that, I think, makes sense, but I do think it would be a good idea to specify, there has to be a response, an acknowledgement, and a plan within a certain time period.
And piggybacking off of that, with the contract that you guys have currently, is there any timeline? So should there be any damaged tiles, any drainage issues in the future? Is there a timeline set in place that those are to be repaired once identified?
I think that Charlie's last point, we would be held to the similar circumstances where we would have to respond in writing, identifying the problem within a certain stipulated amount of time, and take the actions necessary to make those repairs within a timely fashion, but I don't believe there is a hard restriction at this point.
Okay.
I would also note that tile repair is a requirement of this particular project, and if requirements or conditions are not met, the Board of Supervisors can remove the zoning overlay, which is the teeth in the case.
Are there other questions for the staff or the applicants from commission members?
Can we pull up? Oh, you got it. Great job. So we're going to move on to public comment. Before we start calling off names, I'm going to summarize public comment received ahead of time. These were comments submitted either in writing by email or letter to myself, and then passed on to the commissioners. And I'm just going to, I'm not going to go over each comment individually, but we'll summarize their areas of concern. So there are concerns that the cost of returning the land to prior condition, also the decommissioning process, aren't sufficiently accounted for. There's concerns that decommissioning responsibility will fall to the landowner and not to the applicant. There's concerns overtaking high-quality agricultural land out of production. Concerns the project will never in fact be decommissioned, and it will be a utility-scale solar facility in perpetuity. Concerns about damaging subsurface drainage tiles during constructions. Concerns about the aesthetic effect of the panels. Concerns about reduced property values for adjacent properties. Concerns over the effect of local, on local wildlife from construction of panels and fencing of project area. Concerns over the county's ability to enforce conditions and regulate utility-scale solar projects. There was support of renewable energy in general and this project specifically. There were concerns that taking farmland out of production will result in a substantial economic loss to Lynn County. Concerns about the ability of the applicant and community to respond to disasters, to respond to the disasters on the site, such as fire and strong winds. Concerns about the possibility of panels, possibility of panels blowing onto adjacent properties in a derecho-like scenario. Concerns over hazardous substances potentially used in solar panel production, contaminating the soil and groundwater. Skepticism that quality will be improved over the life of the project, and that is soil quality. Concerns over noise during construction. We also had comments submitted from a solar fact, solar farm fact-finding task force, and this was a grassroots task force that was made up of Lynn County residents, some of which are in the crowd today, some planning and zoning commissioners, a supervisor and various county staff. In this task force, two or three different solar facilities, one in Iowa, one in Wisconsin, and one in Minnesota, two of those were fully complete, and one of those was under construction. And the purpose was to observe what has gone right and what has gone wrong on each of those facilities. And the recommendations from that task force are as follows. First, develop a strategic plan for the development of solar at the county and/or state level. This goes to not just being reactive towards applications, but identifying least-conflict land ahead of time to place solar panels. Coordinate construction of new transmission lines with strategic plans for renewables. Again, this is encouraging more planning ahead, working with the Iowa Utilities Board to identify least-conflict land for panels, and then putting new transmission lines towards that land. Develop flexible standards and best practices, including good neighbor policies for the construction, operation, and maintenance of large solar farms. Good neighbor policies, while not used commonly in the Midwest, like Iowa, Wisconsin, Minnesota, have been used in other places, and they are a means to share some of either the money generated by the plant or the power with neighbors that are within the vicinity. Provide inspection and enforcement mechanisms to ensure solar developers adhere to improved plans and conditions. There is a fear that a large company might prefer to just pay a fine rather than correcting violations. Develop incentives and policies to encourage and make possible dual-use practices on solar farms. This would be not just pollinator habitat, but grazing and agricultural production. And then provide floors for tax revenues. This concern is addressing the funding formula for solar projects. They are not taxed at the county level. The state has preempted that taxing responsibility, and the tax rate is set by the state, so if, say, in 15 years, the state of Iowa decided to change that tax rate, that would affect the revenue generated or receive by Lynn County from the project. We're now on to the public comment section, so I will give a, I will give the sign-up sheet to our chair to start calling out people. So I will give a, I will give the sign-up sheet to our chair to start calling out people.
And I would request, can we go back to one of Charlie's first slides that has the standards for approval on it? Just so we have it up there, so we know that that's what we're addressing at this meeting? Yeah, the first one, I think, or one of the first slides.
And I, before we get into this, I just want to say we have a five-minute time limit for speakers. We're not going to beat people over the head with it, but please try to stay within that time limit, avoid repetitive comments, and keep the comments focused on the Coggin Solar Farm. There are, there is another proposed solar farm in Lynn County, but comments today should be focused on this specific project.
I will actually have a timer on it, so if you hear the beeping, that's me.
So again, we will ask for comments to be focused on the Coggin Solar Project. That is what we can consider tonight at the commission meeting. You know, future projects may be submitted to the county, but tonight we'll only be considering this specific application. Okay, our first person on our list that has a checkmark which said they would wish to speak is Pam Mackey Taylor. Please forgive me if I don't get your name quite right. Please go ahead and state your name and address, and then make your comment.
I'm Pam Mackey Taylor. I don't think the mic's on.
Can we make sure that mic's on?
I think you've got to get kind of close to it.
I'm Pam Mackey Taylor. I'm the director of the Iowa chapter of the Sierra Club. I live at 2200 South 31st Street in Marion. The Sierra Club first is supportive of this project, and we wish that you would advance it and approve the project. We do have one concern, and that is that the measures need to be taken so that birds, including ducks, geese, and swans, do not assume that the solar panels are water, basically the lake effect. Clonera stated in its letter about the Glint and Glare Study that, I quote, "Solar PV installations in aggregate tend to be less reflective than many metal and glass surfaces, such as vehicles and building windows, and bear more of a resemblance to lakes and ponds in the way they reflect sunlight," end quote. And that is from their letter from Joshua Gunderson, August 12th, 2021, Coggin Solar Glint and Glare Study. We, and Sierra Club is recommending that Coggin Solar employees or contractors monitor the solar farm for birds that have collided with the solar panels, resulting in dead or wounded birds. That would help in better implementing measures to defer or deflect bird collisions. According to Black &amp; Veach, quote, "Large solar fields such as those that have been built in the last several years in Southern California and the desert southwest can fool birds into changing flight direction, sometimes during migration, to approach them because they appear to be lakes from a distance." Many of the birds that have been killed at these large solar sites are waterbirds, which indicates that these birds fly to solar fields and realize too late in their descent that the solar panels are not water. The waterbirds then collide with the solar panels and are critically wounded or killed. Some waterbirds have also, some waterbirds also have great difficulty taking off from non-water surfaces, which could leave them stranded in the desert areas without food, water, or shelter," end quote. And that is from Black &amp; Veach, "Impact of Solar Energy on Wildlife is an Emerging Environmental Issue." And as I just stated, it is an emerging issue, and there's a lot of study that still needs to be done. The research is evolving, and therefore, Sierra Club recommends that Coggin Solar monitor new developments throughout the life of the solar farm. And as I said earlier, we do support this project, but we do wish that there was some kind of indication that Coggin Solar would be responsible for monitoring bird collisions.
Thank you. Okay, and we will address any questions or comments brought up at the end of the comment period. The next person is Samantha Peterson.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Peterson. I reside at 527 Driftwood Lane in Atkins, Iowa. I'm speaking in opposition to the Coggin Solar Project because I understand what the non-participating residents who could be surrounded by this project are facing and what they are feeling. My family is facing a similar situation just north of Atkins in Benton County, and we are very worried about how this could affect our home. I share many of the concerns that will be or have been shared today for many reasons. And because of this, I don't believe that these large-scale utility projects belong around people, their families, and their homes. In regards to the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan and the rezoning staff report for case JR21-0008, in my opinion, the section of the plan titled "Livable Communities" has been ignored. Each goal listed in the "Livable Communities" section received a non-applicable rating from the Lynn County staff. And when I think about a livable community, I think of a place where neighbors protect their neighbors. And I believe that the Lynn County staff should be digging a little bit deeper into these goals in the Comprehensive Plan. Listed in the "Livable Communities" section of this plan, two goals caught my attention. The first one is to protect and enhance the health and safety of all Lynn County residents. We live in an area where severe weather is common. It's not if a tornado or a derecho happens, it's a matter of when. We were affected very severely on my farm in Atkins. This ties into the Hazard Planning Section of the Comprehensive Plan as well, I believe. Disaster recovery needs to be considered when we talk about the health and safety of residents in this community. And for this reason, I think this goal deserves a, does not support recommendation rather than a non-applicable. Also, the mental health of the non-participating residents needs to be considered as well. Being surrounded by thousands and thousands of solar panels is definitely going to change the way of life of these people, and that's something that my fam, a worry that my family shares as well. I would say that this goal deserves a does-not-support recommendation for this reason, too. The second goal that caught my eye is to maximize resilience through the production and purchase of local and regional products and the protection of local resources. This is a goal listed in the plan. I believe Lynn County should require the panels and materials to be USA-made. For this reason, again, I believe that this goal deserves a does-not-support recommendation. Utility-scale solar plants do not belong around people, in my opinion. I do not believe that the solar overlay onto agriculturally-zoned land is appropriate in this community. The "Livable Communities" section of the Comprehensive Plan, in my opinion, has been ignored. And for that reason, I would say, just please consider the real people and families living in this area, their well-being, and the potential for their livable community to continue. Thank you for this time to speak and public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person that indicated they would like to speak is Robert and Roxanne Portsline. Pass, okay? Okay, the next one that said that they would like to speak is John Zakrazek. And then, it's cursive. Ryer is the last name, I think? 1237 325th Avenue, or 20th Street in Ryan, Iowa? Was it Jerome?
Yes, Jerome Reese. Okay, and I brought this up to the Board of Supervisors, and they said they'd take it under advisement. This project is two and a half miles from Coggin, but it's right across the fence from me, okay? And when deracial hits again, my question is, who's going to clean that crap up out of my field, you know? And they said, "We'll have to get you an answer to that." Well, I would like the answer. And I also signed a petition. And I don't know who the guy was, but he called me and wanted to know what my concerns were. I said, "Really, sir? I have no concerns." And he says, "Well then, how's, how come you signed a petition?" I said, "I signed that for my grandkids and your grandkids." I said, "I'm 70 years old. It don't mean..." I said, "I think down the road, our grandkids are going to wish that that ground was used for producing food and not..." There is so much worthless ground around that gets sunshine. I, I just don't understand putting this on prime Iowa farm ground. It seems assinifying to me. I'm sorry, but that's my concerns.
Okay, thank you, Jerome. Okay, the next person would be Joel Payton.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Will you give me like a 30-second? Okay, thank you. Okay. Joel Payton, 3002 Troy Mills Boulevard, Wentworth, Iowa. I am a participating landlord in a Coggin Solar project. When my wife Carrie and I were contacted by Clonera about having solar on our ground, we really did not know what to think. Given my past work experience in the wind industry, I felt pretty educated on the pros and cons of that kind of project, but needed to do some research on solar. After educating ourselves, we realized there was positive impacts from solar that wind could not bring to the table. In addition to the benefit of clean energy, solar does not have any concrete that's installed below the surface of the ground. It disturbs less soil by allowing for electric cables to be installed in trays above ground, and solar does not sit 300-plus feet above the ground or have the flicker or noise effect of the blades. We view this project as a risk management tool. Any active or retired farmer in this room tonight or listening into the phone knows that every farmer faces multiple risks each crop year. These can range from weather, weeds, bugs, disease, commodity prices, and fluctuations in input costs. Adding solar into our farm portfolio will help us manage these risks. Instead of harvesting just corn and soybeans, we now will be harvesting the sun's energy as well. Coggin Solar stands to benefit our local school district and our taxpayers through an increase in property tax base. Carrie and I both graduated from Northland and currently have children attending the district. We obviously have vested interest in the district, and knowing the benefits to a school helped with our decision. After, another benefit in my mind is letting our ground rest and rejuvenate for 35 years. Currently, through the CRP program, the government pays farmers to take their ground out of production and put it into set aside. We look to do the same with our farm. The I-beams that will be direct buried into our ground take a very small footprint. The rest of our land will be covered in pre-grass and pollinators, allowing the ground to rest. After 35 years, our kids will be able to take advantage of the organic matter that was built during this time. Clonera has been nothing but professional to work with. They want to do what's best for our ground and have been receptive to our concerns. After touring the solar farm in Wapalo that Clonera also developed, and talking to community members from Wapalo, it is clear Clonera wants to do the right thing. Hearing these comments about Clonera, in my personal experience, reassured me we are working with the right developer. I did have a person come to me a few months ago and told me Clonera will be bankrupt in a few years, and I may be left with a pile of scrap in my field. My concern with this comment is that not widely, it's not widely understood how permanent a power purchase agreement is. Clonera has a 20-year power purchase agreement signed with SIPCO, which leaves me no worries about this site going bankrupt. SIPCO is purchasing the power from Coggin Solar, and SIPCO's customers are mostly rural electric cooperatives such as Makoka Valley and Lynn County REC's, which means the power would produce with state local. My wife and I have been stereotyped as absentee landowners. My wife grew up two and a half miles from the proposed site, and I grew up north of Troy Mills, which is where we live now. We have lived here our entire lives and are active in our church and school communities. If anyone thinks I'm just walking away and do not care about this site being anything less than perfect, you do not know me. I will not have soil erosion on my land. Every tile broken will be fixed. Weeds will be controlled until cover grass is established. I am going to take pride in how this site looks because this ground is still mine, has my name on it. We are not owners that live out of state and do not care what happens to our ground. I want Coggin Solar to be a template for your solar farms that construct in the state. Carrie and I have worked very hard to make my dream of farming a reality. While this may not look like a traditional farming operation, change is always not a bad thing. I believe a land, I believe a landowner should be able to decide what they do with their property. Lynn County has done a great job in the process from public comment meetings at the beginning of the year to vetting out Clonera's application now. I applaud them for the work they have done so far. Ultimately, the supervisors will have the final decision in Coggin Solar project. I just ask to make their decision off of facts and not what ifs. Thank you for your time, Ray.
Thank you. Okay, our next person is Ellis Van.
Good evening. My name is Ellis Van. I live at 421 Lime Rock Drive Northwest in Cedar Rapids. Fundamentally, I'm here to say that I support industrial solar. I think in the overall, it's a good thing. I'm certainly interested in the Coggin Solar project because I suspect it will set precedent and policy in the development of many other form, or solar development projects here in Lynn County. To give you some context to my comments, look further on. I would share the observation that in many instances, industry has left the community with a significant remediation burden after the industry has left the area. Think of the brownfields in Cedar Rapids as an example. In that context, then, I'm concerned about the decommissioning plan that's been submitted. The plan concludes that decommission, decommissioning cost at the end of project life will be greater than the salvage value. And that's at the 20-year interval, not the 35-year interval. So it was spaced out to 35, the decommissioning fund would be even more depleted. So there's a sentence in the draft Tarragon decommissioning plan that the county will work out in an agreeable financial assurance system. Secondly, if you look at the Stanley report, the county is encouraged to request a more substantial form of financial assistance. So based on those observations and the comments from Stanley, I'm curious about what Lynn County is doing to make sure of those financial assurances. So specifically, what is Lynn County doing to obtain a more substantial form of financial assurance? And why is the staff not recommending a performance bond to cover the anticipated and updated cost of decommissioning? Where I used to work, we had to put money aside into a decommissioning fund, and there were actually dollars in it. So when that facility was sold from one person to another, the funds of decommissioning went with the facility itself. I don't see any sort of protections for Lynn County and the community based on that. Thank you.
The next person is Steve Mason.
I would like to address, okay. I would like to address the public safety issues associated with the Coggin Industrial Solar Project. The entire project would be serviced by volunteer fire departments. There are four types of fires that would affect the solar plant. One, the solar plant itself. Two, birds or animals, including nests. Three, lightning, direct or indirect. Four, surrounding fields and ditches to the solar plant. When a fire occurs, depending on a starting point, the smoke and toxins will most likely travel southeast because of the northwest prevailing wind. Remember Toxic Tuesday on July 16th, 1985, the old Cedar Rapids Waste Treatment Plant Fire? It led to the shutdown and evacuation of downtown Cedar Rapids because of the changing weather conditions. What is the composition of the solar panels? How much oil is in the inverters? When the soil is contaminated from a tornado or fire, who pays for the cleanup? Landowner or the solar company? Coggin has had three tornadoes over the past 20 years. Keep in mind, debris would impact the non-participating neighbors as well. It is possible the solar company could file bankruptcy and leave the landowner with the cleanup costs. Most likely, the landowner cannot afford those costs in three years, provided the landowner does not pay taxes. In three years, providing the landowner does not pay taxes, the land becomes a delinquent tax sale. Question: Could the county become the landowner and be responsible for the cleanup like what happened with Iowa Steel and Farmstead? Where and how much does it cost to recycle solar panels today and in the future? I have visited with a fire official that has a Clonera solar installation in operation. There had been no fire drills or communication. The plan now is to let it burn and try to protect exposures. Please consider all aspects of the project from cradle to grave. Examples: loss of prime farm ground, ground preparation, tree removal, waterways, tiling, runoff, flooding, installation of panels and inverters, operation and maintenance written plans, soil contamination, drinking water, aesthetics, property values, wildlife, public safety, and the real cost of decommissioning. Recycling of panels and equipment and land reclamation. And most important, who is responsible for the oversight in the future? Always consider the sale or bankruptcy of a company and their responsibilities. In the presentation, there was a statement on there about a twenty-eighty agreement with the fire departments in Lynn County. I'm well aware of the twenty-eighty agreement. That's nice written on paper, but in reality, it takes firefighters, manpower, and women too, to fulfill their obligations. Manpower's at a premium nowadays. We're losing them. It's across the United States, big time. And I'll be happy to talk with you later about that if you'd like. The other information I have is that the Clonera sold ninety percent of their stock to an Israeli company. So that's something else you should consider. And as far as the heads and material, glass is part of the component in that. I talked to one farmer, and if the glass is broken, how would you like to grant... There's no way you could graze cattle on that ground down the road. How you pick up glass in several acres of damaged farm ground? Your decision will affect thousands of residents and businesses forever. Forty-five years of fire and hazmat experience, Stephen L. Mason. My address, Steve Mason, sixty-five forty-seven Benton Lane Road, Paylo.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on our list is Tracy Nelson.
My name's Tracy Nelson. I live at thirty-three eleven Pleasant Creek Road, Paylo, Iowa. And I support solar projects on private homes, businesses, and utility solar when it's sighted in the proper area. I don't believe high-grade Iowa farmland is proper area. And therefore, I am opposed to the proposed solar project near Coggan due to the fact that it could be detrimental to existing agriculture and it could significantly degrade environmental, ecological, and natural resources. I also believe it will be inadequately served by the public facilities and could cause irreparable harm to non-participating landowners. The first thing I have there, this is a picture of some... Oops, sorry. These are a number of utility poles. There's three here and three here in a pond, or actually a huge lake. This is located a half mile from my home, just south of my home. There's also a drainage map right here. And this is the nineteen fifty-six drainage map that shows these two creeks running down here. This is the scale of that pond right here. And this is actually what it looks like from the aerial view. This is that pond where those power lines are. And this is approximately, wow, it's more than forty... This is a forty-acre track right here. And so it's like over eighty-eight acres involved now. You can see on the drainage map that there are two creeks and that whole area has drainage tile that feeds the two creeks, which had made the land very productive farmland for decades until the utility company put those poles in and installed them breaking all the tile. And they never repaired it, and it slowly went from dry productive farmland to marshland, and it's now a huge lake consuming more than forty acres and including several neighboring farms. For the Coggan Solar Project, thousands of poles will be installed and potentially break innumerable field tile, destroying productive farmland, just like this did. This was over... This is over probably a thirty-year time, but like I said, it started out just little pools around the posts themselves. And it has grown over thirty years to take up massive amount of land. This is forty acres, that's forty acres, that's forty acres. I live right here. I drove past it every day. And this was all farmland. It was crops all the time. And now it is a huge lake. The second one I have is regarding... You'll see a bunch of pictures. And these are from the... These are from the solar panel industry newsletters. It's about fires caused by solar panels. PV Magazine or something like that. And it tells all about how fires are on the rise. And the solar companies try to tell you that fires are rare, but actually, they're very common. The only reason they say they're rare because they aren't specifically listed. There's on the back sheet, there's a... The very last one you should show is when there is a fire, they have to mark down what type of fire it was. And there is nothing for solar, so it's just listed as "other" or "electric fire" or something. Now, according to OSHA and the NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association, they both have stated that most local fire departments can only respond to the call and identify the fire as whether it's a grass fire, like in the buffer zone, or if it's in the area of the solar panels. If it's in the area zone of the solar panels, they cannot do anything. They cannot go in there because of the electrical... Electrocution, because there's so much electricity running around. Those panels aren't dead. Even when the fire is enough, there is still electricity in. And so the only people that can respond to those fires are hazmat unit, which is, I think Hiawatha has one, and is probably the closest. And it'd take... Could be a half hour before they get there. And so when they say, yes, they have agreements with the local volunteer fire departments, they can't do anything about it. They're just gonna burn. And the Iowa DNR occasionally has scheduled fire burns. And part of their protocol is they do not ever have a scheduled burn within a quarter mile of any home. And so if they're gonna... If these burns, if there should happen to be a solar fire, they should have them at least a quarter mile from any home because those homes are gonna be destroyed with the smoke and the fire. And they can't be put out. Our local firemen can't put them out. And so...
You are over five minutes. Did you have additional points?
Okay, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our next person on the list is Kelly Murta.
My name's Kelly Murta, and I live at forty-one ninety-four Quail Ridge Road in Center Point, Iowa. Thank you for your time tonight. The Lynn County Comprehensive Plan was put to resolution by the Planning and Zoning Commission in May of 2013 and went into effect in July of 2013. Resource Protection within the Comprehensive Plan specifically calls out agricultural resources as a key component. The guiding principle for this area, the plan identifies a need to protect resources for current and future generations' quality of life. The second goal within that plan under Resource Protection looks at encouraging long-term viability of agriculture. The first objective under that was to use LISA to retain high-value and high-quality agricultural land in direct development away from areas that are best suited for agricultural development. The renewable energy overlay removes the LISA review process, which I disagree with. The U.S. Energy Information Administration maintains past current and future information on electric generating power plants with one megawatt or greater capacity. If you look at solar plants that were the same size as what's proposed for Coggan, there were only four existing in the United States at the point the Comprehensive Plan became effective. Per the Acre Value website, the average CSR rating for the Coggan project is eighty-four point one. This is a significant fact, given that the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan identifies high-value land as that with a CSR over sixty-five. Because the scope and the scale of the Coggan project reviewed today exceeds most development that was even happening in the United States at the time the plan was written, it would have been impossible to anticipate what would be necessary to create a plan that balances the elements within the Comprehensive Plan. Furthermore, Table One from the staff report on this project marks Goal Number Two: the encouragement of long-term viability of agriculture is, quote, "not applicable." I deeply disagree with that determination as well. It's imperative that the Lynn County Planning and Zoning Commission pay specific attention to the conflict that's present within our Comprehensive Plan relating to the agricultural resources. Based on the Resource Protection element as a key component of the plan, I believe that developing seven hundred acres of highly-quality agricultural farm ground would be irresponsible and a reckless misappropriation of our county's limited and valuable resources. I would like to request that the commission refer this proposal back for additional review and consideration. I think that we need to appreciate the resource that we have and have parameters and limitations on how much the county is willing to put into these projects because this isn't the first. It won't be the last. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Alden.
I'm Sarah Alden. I live at forty-one twenty-four Greens Grove Road in Center Point. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to share my public comment. According to the Lynn County's Unified Development Code, Article Seven, zoning districts, the ag zoning district, lists Bullet One as "protect land best suited for farming." The Lynn County Comprehensive Plan, under the element Resource Protection, lists Goal Two as "encourage the long-term viability of agriculture." In the case staff report, it is noted as not applicable in the matrix for this element. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines farming as "the practice of agriculture." The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines agriculture as "the science, art, or practice of cultivating the soil, producing crops and raising livestock, and in a varying degrees, the preparation and marketing of resulting products." Going a bit further, harvesting a crop is defined as a plant or animal product that can be grown and harvested seasonally from the fields. According to NREL, the National Renewable Energy Laboratory's National Solar Radiation Database Physical Solar Model, which I passed out to each of you, Iowa is not best suited for generating solar electricity. NREL's map shows that the annual average of daily total resource for the nation and lists Iowa in the four-point-oh to four-point-two-five grouping, which is the second lowest category for solar radiation. As you can imagine, the states with the most solar radiation are California, Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, and Florida. Industrial solar facilities require five to ten acres to generate one megawatt of electricity. With a large footprint of utility solar, there is an added cost of reliability. Solar energy is not a stable source, which means it doesn't generate electricity unless the sun is out. I recently had an opportunity to visit a utility-scale solar site in Wisconsin on the day where they were doing generation testing to get a facility online. The date was moderately overcasted with a light snow. The team was wanting to generate a hundred and twenty megawatts for their generation test. The test was only able to capture twenty megawatts. I remember thinking in Wisconsin that it has a similar weather to Iowa. With poor solar radiation in Iowa for electricity generation, developing seven hundred and fifty acres of highly productive agricultural ground into an industrial plant to generate intermittent electricity is not a responsible use of the county's precious resource and is in direct contrast to Goal Two of the Resource Protection element of the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan. In 2014, the Planning and Zoning Commission received a memo from the Planning and Developing Manager stating that there is a sense of urgency for staff to propose language for utility solar installations because there was information that the application had been made for a four-seventy-six(c)(1) renewable tax credit through the state of Iowa to build a utility solar-scale installation in rural Lynn County. These projects had a nameplate capacity of two-point-five megawatts and were not developed. Lynn County does not have the experience nor the resources to start with a one-hundred-megawatt solar installation. I think it is fair to say that any of us doing something for the first time, it doesn't go as well as we'd hoped, and this needs to go well. The county has done a great job to date with transparency and accessibility to information, and I do not want to minimize this. The Coggan project is too big, and there is too much at stake for agriculture and neighboring residents. Industrial-scale solar plants are not agricultural uses and are better defined as commercial development. These facilities require commercial equipment, including solar panels, inverters, DCAC connections, meters, wiring, racking, and mounting. None of these elements are typical of agriculture and are not grown or raised as such. If you close your eyes for a moment and remove the farmland out of the equation and look at this for what it is, picture a utility solar installation. You will see a commercial electricity generation facility. It belongs on commercially zoned areas and does not support agricultural practices or uses. Based on the Lynn County's Unified Code for Article Seven, zoning division ag zoning district elements, and Goal Two of the Resource Protection element of Lynn County's Comprehensive Plan, it is in the best interest of Lynn County and its residents that each planning and zoning commissioner here today make a recommendation of denial of the Clonera solar rezoning application, finding it an inadequate site for developing an electrical generation facility. Thank you.
Okay, next is Greg and Martha Bickel.
I'm Greg Bickel, Martha Bickel, two-two-five-zero, Coggan Road. Our property has been identified as a quarry. It is a fish farm. There are protected bird species that visit my farm: eagles, osprey, herons, and blue kingfishers. There's also an albino buck. Our twenty-five-acre farm will be surrounded on three sides by the Coggan Solar Farm. Wind turbines are now visible north of Lynn Delaware Road. My Field of Dreams, with sunsets over fields of corn, will be replaced with barbed wire fence and solar panels. The sounds of birds chirping will be replaced with inverters humming and tracking motors clicking. clicking. I toured Clonera's solar farm in Wapalo. I observed firsthand the noise, the glare, and the magnetic interference which comes from solar farms. They are an industrial assault on the eyes and the ears. My fish farm is downstream of three-hundred-and-forty acres of this project. I am concerned the velocity of the water coming off the solar panels during heavy rains, creating flash flooding, which could wash out my fish business. Six-hundred feet of my driveway is adjacent to the west property line. The solar farm's fence will cause my entire driveway to be drifted with snow. I empathize with the financial struggles of the farmers, my neighbors. This project is a win for them. I know they care about their properties. But the two major landowners for this project don't live on their farms. They won't have to endure the year-long construction or the thirty-plus years, my retirement until the day I die. Living next to an industrial complex, however, a supermajority of the neighbors that do live within one mile of this site will, and we oppose this project. We beg you, please deny this solar application. Solar belongs in places that cannot grow crops. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next is William Ryan.
Good evening. My name is William Rogan. I have property southeast. I'm a non-participating landowner adjacent to this on Perring Ridge Road. I'm, I'm, I don't have a whole lot of homework for you. I commend the people who have brought in statistics. They have done their due diligence, and I think they should be commended. I'm just going to try to bring you some common sense. I, I'm not against solar. This is just the wrong place for it. This is agricultural land. We, as a society, by two thousand and fifty have to increase our food production by seventy percent. We are essentially shooting ourselves in the foot as a community, as a society, by taking agricultural land out of the mix for the next thirty-five years, or more. We have to feed these people. We have to put gas in their tanks. That's what this land is being utilized for, and we need it. I mean, to put it in perspective here, let's think back to nineteen-eighty-six, thirty-five years ago. Do any of you want technology, seven-hundred-and-fifty acres of technology from nineteen-eighty-six sitting outside your house? That's ludicrous. I mean, if, if we're going to do solar panels, the, the most logical thing to do would be to have, to replace them every five years, at least, just to catch up with the technology curve. These panels are going to be outdated and worth nothing in thirty-five years. This scrap idea, scrap it. It's not going to be worth anything. Essentially, I kind of look at this as a really shiny nickel. I mean, if you think about the amount of money that has been spent on this project thus far, it, it, it's more than I'm going to make in my lifetime. It's more than a number of us are going to make in their lifetimes. And, and we're stepping over a dollar, a dollar that we're already producing, a dollar that we already know that we need, to pick up this really shiny nickel. And thi- this, this project doesn't belong here. This is the wrong place for it. I, I really am touched by the turnout of the community here. I, I am a veteran of three-service duties overseas, and I have been places where people have no voice. And I have come here, and I am, I am thankful to see these people turning out and saying no to something that doesn't make any common sense. And, and we don't have to have any fear of repercussions because of it. There, there are many countries, and I've seen it firsthand, where people would be followed home after a meeting like this, because they disagreed with the people with, that are going to make a profit. Now, under the, the, the own, the, under the admission of what's been said tonight here by, by the people involved, their, their primary objective here is to make money. It, it, it's not for the betterment of our community. The, the reason that they chose this is because of the site of the substation. It makes economical sense for them to put it here, because it's the cheapest place. They, they can plug in, and they have said they'd have to spend ridiculous amounts of money to put it anywhere else. And, and that's looking out for their bank accounts, their investors, their stockholders. That's not looking out for our community. I'm going to be in my mid-seventies when this is decommissioned. I don't want to look at this the rest of my life. I don't want to have to deal with the future problems of it. They've all been laid out tonight about what could happen and what might happen and what likely, probably will happen. And, and all of those things belong someplace where people don't live. All of the, an industrial complex belongs someplace where people aren't raising their children. I want to pass down property to my children that they can value, that they can take care of. I, I, I don't want them to have to deal with this issue, and I don't want to deal with it in my retirement, when, when it's a huge eyesore and people have forgotten about it and it's not, it's not the hot topic, the issue at the time. So, that's my two cents, and I very much hope that you seriously consider this, because it's affecting people's lives, children's lives, grandkids' lives. This is a long-term decision, and, and, and one that should not be taken lightly. And, and please follow the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker would be Seth Green.
Hi, my name is Seth Green. I live at fifty-three eighteen Valley Farm Road, Central City. My concerns are about, it's, it's an industrial site, and I don't think the services that they're going to provide for fire protection, on any other industrial site, they would have to have a fire hydrant every four-hundred-foot, under most of the international fire codes. I don't think they've addressed that concern at all with fire protection. If they had to put a hydrant, you know, every four-hundred-foot, I don't think this thing would be even feasible. If you go to YouTube, they tell you, in their plan there, their overview of it, it said that these don't have a fire concern. If you go to YouTube and just Google fire, solar panel fires, and you'll see all the fires that solar panel fields have on top of roofs everywhere. So, that's one concern. I'm also disappointed with the master plan of Lynn County, that these areas wouldn't be laid out ahead of time in the master plan. Instead of that, they can go anywhere. I think that's ludicrous. Every city has a master plan, so if you're going to buy a piece of property, that you would know what you're going to go up against, that if there's an industrial park, if there's a commercial zoning or whatever. I think that's just ridiculous that Lynn County would do that. The substation repairs, I can tell you that the problem they're having with the drainage things, we will get nowhere with Lynn County. With every city, I've done projects before, and if you call or, I've been associated with projects, like, city has contractors building a road in front of your property, and you have concerns. They say, "Well, that's a private contractor. We can't do anything." And you go back and forth, back and forth. And I can feel the pain of that person that said they're still having problems with the substation, with the drainage and stuff, because that will never get revolve or resolved, and you'll just, it's just crazy amount of effort you have to put into to get something done. Otherwise, I think that's all. I bought property in the country because I wanted to live in the country. I didn't want to live next to an industrial site. So, thank you.
The next person on the list is Laura Robinson.
I'm Laura Robinson, and I want to thank the staff for the work that you've done, and I also want to thank you for your willingness to take our comments. I respectfully but strongly disagree with a number of conclusions currently made in the staff report. I believe they should be reevaluated and rescored. Under the Comprehensive Plan goals, there's a heading called "Economic Development and Employment Opportunities." Goal One states, "They encourage a diverse agriculture economy, including local foods and commodity-based agriculture." The staff matrix is scored "not applicable." Well, that's very clearly incorrect. This proposed industrial installation would take prime farmland out of production for decades and almost certainly permanently. It's clearly detrimental to Lynn County's ag economy under that definition. The county goal does not say "find alternative" or "non-agriculture sources of income, such as industrial solar, for retired or landowners who don't live by the site." Hundreds of acres covered by hundreds of thousands of solar panels is not agriculture. It's nothing more than industrialization of Lynn County. This absolutely endangers Lynn County agriculture. It's extremely clear that this should be scored as "does not support." Goal Two, "Seek opportunities to diversify the local employment base, a supportive environment for existing and new businesses." This proposal is not some theoretical proposal by Google or Amazon to get access to green energy, just because Lynn County would provide loose land-use zoning and allow the developer to do it on the cheap. It's a proposal to industrialize prime Lynn County farmland. It clearly eliminates job opportunities for farmers and people employed in the seed, fertilizer, and farm equipment business. The developer has attempted to mislead the public with claims of hundreds of jobs created, although no commitment to local employment has been made, except maybe for somebody to mow the weeds. The Coggin industrial solar proposal does not diversify or create any permanent new jobs, but it eliminates them. Goal Two, I feel should be scored "does not support local employment." Goal Three says "support and encourage a well-educated, highly-skilled, and diverse workforce." This is scored as "supports." But like the scoring before it, there's absolutely nothing in this proposal that does anything to support a well-educated, diverse workforce. If industrial solar electricity generates that, the staff would have to score new nuclear, coal, or gas-generated electrical plants the same way. At Wapalo, the developer used an out-of-state workforce. There's no commitment to use local workers for these temporary jobs. So, instead of "support," I feel it should be "not applicable" or "does not support." Now, in closing, I'm not anti-solar. I'm against industrial solar on some of the best farmland in Lynn County. My farm touches the substation. The CSR is in eighty-eight, eighty-nine, almost ninety, and we're going to cover it up. I also wonder how many pro-solar people, including those making the decisions for Lynn County, would vote for it if it was next to their property. I should have property rights, too. Thank you.
Okay, we did intend to take a fifteen-minute intermission, so I would say we will come back at eight-fifty. And we will take a break. And we will re, or we will continue with our public comments at this time. The next person on our list is Paula Robinson.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I apologize for my voice. I'll do the best I can. I wanted to tag on to Laura Robinson's points for her goals, and to tag on to that would be the last of the livable communities, which also Sammy Peterson touched on, and that's the area that I feel very strongly about. I live on Lynn Delaware Road. The project for my property would be between here and the door. This is my childhood home. I moved back here to Iowa, to my home, only to be swallowed up by metal and glass, construction, things that will never, ever be the same. I don't know if anybody noticed on the video, beautiful photo of Clonera's substation, wonderful mountains in the background. But if you also noticed, the substation was on sand. That's where they belong, not on Iowa prime farmland. You can't grow vegetation on a desert. Uh, let me get, there are more. Sixty neighbors that have signed a petition opposing Coggin industrial solar. This petition has been submitted to the Lynn County Planning and Development. As you can imagine, this represents almost all of the people that live or own land adjacent to this proposed industrial site. These citizens of Lynn County, Delaware County, and Buchanan County believe it is wrong to use prime farmland. We understand that our property values will suffer. Developers use opinion-based studies to say otherwise, but everyone in this room knows that both our property values and our rural way of life will be forever changed. We ask that you decline and rescore this evaluation and reject the proposal. And by the way, as an adjacent landowner, I have never been contacted by Clonera. To me, that does not demonstrate being a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is, I believe it's Greg Gerley. Please correct me if I'm saying that incorrectly.
Good evening. My name is Greg Girdes with bad handwriting. I'm a lawyer in Iowa City. My office address is one-oh-five Iowa Avenue, office number two-three-four. I represent the Robinsons, who are here this evening speaking to you. I would like to start out some brief remarks by saying that tonight's meeting is not about Clonera. Tonight's meeting is about the community. It's about you and future P and Z boards, as far as what standards you're going to set, how lax you are going to be, and it's about a company called Enlight Renewable Energy. Enlight Renewable Energy is an Israeli corporation which owns ninety percent of Clonera. I do not know who its shareholders are. Um, to my knowledge, what country those shareholders come from, if there are any American shareholders, has never been produced. I'd like to start by focusing on what you've got on the board. These aren't things that I've made up. These are things that are the law, okay? I'm going to specifically concentrate on B and F. Please note that there are six standards there. This isn't a best five out of six or best three out of six. All six have to be met. Back in around 2013, after a great deal of work, Lynn County put together a comprehensive plan. There's three volumes. I've only copied a few sections here. You will note that underneath F, what you approve tonight has to be consistent with the comprehensive master plan. I've mentioned earlier that this meeting, to some extent, is about you and future P and Z boards. Because if you relax your standards, I can tell you right now that somebody else is going to come to the next P and Z board, or perhaps even you, in a month and say, "Hey, I don't quite meet all of the requirements, but I meet three out of the six." You let Clonera do it. What about me? Then you're going to be in a conundrum, because either you give them equal treatment with Clonera, or you're going to face a lawsuit. All right, let's talk about the comprehensive plan as it relates to agriculture. This is on page thirty-four of volume one of the comprehensive plan. Objective 2.1, "Protect land best suited to a variety of agricultural processes..." Excuse me, "practices." Objective 2.2, "Maintain agriculture as an integral part of the county's economy, landscape, and natural resource base." Interesting that you put the word "landscape" in there. That means that you want the countryside to look like countryside. You don't want it to look like the industrial wasteland site that this could be. Third thing, "Discourage non-agricultural uses in the agricultural areas of the county." I'm not making this up. I'm reading it to you from the plan. And to direct development away from areas best suited for agriculture. As others have mentioned, the overwhelming question here is, "Why can't they find a better site?" What is it about this site, other than money, which makes it so essential for a solar project? Surely there is land in Lynn County that has a CSR rating in the thirties and the forties, typically known as scrub land, other than land which is used for prime farm production, which is literally some of the best farmland in the world. This isn't really about today. It's what people are going to think about what we did thirty years from now. You know, thirty years from now, is somebody going to be asking, "Why did they put that production site there? Why can't it be in a better place?" I think that's my beeper. So I'm going to, um, sit down. Thank you for your attention. Um, you need to reconsider this. You need to reconsider this in light of all of those, not just the chosen ones, okay? Vote no until you've got more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Robinson is next.
My name is Tom Robinson. I'm at 2094 Lynn Delaware Road, Coggan. And I wanted to talk... Everything that I have to say, not everything, but most of what I have to say revolves around the tile and the drainings. As you are all painfully aware of all the crap we've gone through with this drainage tile that surrounds the substation. Um, my first comment I wanted to make was that Clonera reps asked here a little while ago about, you know, when the repairs need to be made, if they find any tile. Um, if it looked... If you read the application that Clonera turned in, it says "immediately." Now, I don't know what the definition of "immediately" is, but it says in there, "Tile will be repaired immediately." Now, that's somewhere between, according to SIPCO, that's somewhere between, um, "never" and "never times ten." So has Clonera gone out and mapped the tile? Have they contacted adjoining landowners? Has anybody even talked on the tile thing? Have they gone to any of the landowners? Have they talked to the people upstream, downstream, that'll be directly affected by this? I don't think so. My wife and I haven't been contacted. My brother and my sister, who are also adjacent landowners, they haven't been contacted. Um, also in the application, Clonera stated that the Coggan substation was sufficient. It was just great for transmitting this electricity. And it said there is a... And we didn't... It was just perfect for this hundred-megawatt project. Three weeks ago, we were informed by SIPCO that SIPCO had filed a plan, uh, application to expand the Coggan substation. And, uh, that was interesting, because, uh, last summer, fourth... Just after the Fourth of July, Charlie was out. Charlie Nichols came out to our place and toured the pla... toured our farm, and we had a great time and all that stuff, and looked around at all the concerns that we had. And one comment that Charlie made was that, "Now, has SIPCO talked to you guys?" And I say, "About what?" "About they want to expand." And I said, "Where?" "They want to expand to the east." And, uh, I said, "No, we've not heard a word." That was in July. This is November. SIPCO still hasn't contacted us. We, you know, we were... I just wanted to point out, two weeks ago at the Board of Adjustment meeting, the Clonera rep, Mr. Fitzgerald over here, um, he put a map up on the overhead, and it showed that map on the overhead was, uh... Showed the possible expansion of the substation to the west or to... Yeah, to the west or to the south. And, uh, I went up to him afterwards, and I said, you know, just so as a point of contention, said, "Your map is not accurate according to what SIPCO wants to do." And he said, "No, he told me I was wrong." Well, guess what? I am correct. SIPCO wants to expand the substation, even though in the application, everything is adequate. Everything is just hunky-dored for a hundred-megawatt project. So I just wanted to point that out. Just wanted to give you an update on SIPCO. They've still not shown us how they're going to repair our family's tile drain easement that they broke, they damaged, and they destroyed during the substation construction in 2017. That's when they did it. The plan was put together on twenty fourteen, thirteen, and twenty fourteen. That's when the plan was finalized and the construction was finished up in 2017. And, uh, just so you know, SIPCO told us, well, they knew when they built it, when they did the construction on the substation just directly west of our line fence, just, um, SIPCO said, "Well, told us here this fall, 'Well, we knew that, you know, we knew that we caught a tile line, but we didn't know if it was active, so we just covered it up.'" That's what we're dealing with on this whole stupid deal. You know, I've got a couple of other things, you know. Clonera said that on the six hundred and forty acres of solar panels, there's going to be three hundred and twenty-five thousand of them. And I've been down to the Wapalo site four times. And there... And as I... I can't say for sure, but I think there's four, what they call peers or I-beams or whatever, drawn, driven into ground on every solar panel. That means there's going to be, give or take, whether there's three or there's four or whatever, there's going to be right at a million of these pilings driven into the ground on the six hundred and forty acres. Do the math on that. Just get your calculator out and do a ma... Do the math on that thing. That's a piling every... It's somewhere about five and a half feet, five and a half feet square. That's how many pilings will be driven in the ground on that six hundred and forty acres of useful ground. Well, another thing that I'm really concerned about is the property values. Clonera has stated several times that the property values are not going to be adversely affected. And I want to just tell them, "Put your money where your mouth is, and please." If you don't think they're going to be affected, put it in writing. Give you the opportunity. You can contact me afterwards. And the last thing I just wanted to point out was, this afternoon, digging around, I expressed some of my frustrations. Express my frustrations over this, our dealings with SIPCO and what they did to the tile main and their intentiveness and their unwillingness to talk to us. Last... You know, there about a month ago, they finally said, "Okay, we're done talking to you guys. From now on, everything's going to be through the attorneys." I'm going, "This is crazy." So I went out, or this afternoon, I printed off, back from 2013, it was done in 2014. It was a fifty-seven-page application. This is the engineering plan slash business plan off of the Recorder's website. The Lynn County Recorder's website. It's fifty-seven pages long. And in this, uh, fifty-seven pages, there are twelve... Twelve direct references to protecting drainage and doing it right according to Iowa Code 468, Chapter Five, or whatever the heck it is. And, uh, this is also correspondence from the Planning and Development. In this deal, in here, Planning and Development Committee, the Board of Adjustment Committee, the supervisors signed off it on it. Everybody's... All the high-priced people in Lynn County signed off on this deal. And all I know is, here it is, 2017, they ding this tile up, and, uh, just in the last few days, finally said, "Well, okay, we need to start talking." This is crazy. This is just nuts.
Tom, yeah. Thank you.
If anybody wants us, I've got fifty-seven pages.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, next is Jessica Peterson.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Jessica Peterson. I live at 3224 68th Street, um, Chelsburg, Iowa. Um, I want to start out by thanking you for holding this meeting and giving the people an opportunity to speak on the proposed solar project by Clonera and Coggan. Um, I am here to express my concerns when it comes to Point A of the comprehensive plan, stating that the proposed development is not detrimental to existing agricultural uses. The existing and current use of this land is to produce crops. This land is also ranked of the top fifteen percent of farmland in Iowa with an average CSR rating of seventy... Seventy-three point seventy-six. It also states that over half of the project area is defined as federally... Federally as either prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. It does not make sense to me to propose a solar plant on soil that is this good and this productive for future uses of agriculture and Coggan. They state that this land, uh, will indefinitely be farmable once the project is decommissioned. Where is that proof? What happens when or if a severe storm was to hit within the next thirty-five years? Will that land be farmable if that was to happen? I also believe that transparency with a full list of components and chemicals within the panels is important, as well as transparency with where and how the panels are manufactured. When the representative from Clonera stated that they do not have control over how the panels are manufactured at the technical review meeting, uh, this was very concerning to me. Because the list of hazardous chemicals grows every year, we do not know which chemicals may be defined and determined to be hazardous in the next ten, twenty, or thirty years. To be proactive and transparent with residents, I believe a full list needs to be done by Clonera for the community of Coggan's health, safety, and welfare, along with the health, safety, and welfare of the environment and future uses of the soil for ag uses. Utility-scale solar projects are new to Lynn County. We have never done this before. We can't possibly know all of the health concerns involved, so let's take a proactive stance and require developers to use USA-manufactured and assembled solar panels. This will ensure that products are made with USA standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Ryan Sli.
Hello. My name is Ryan Sli. I live at 1413 Stony Point Road Northwest, um, on the outskirts of, excuse me, Cedar Rapids. I... I support solar. However, I do not support industrial solar in this manner, mainly as many people have expressed tonight, by taking arable land out of production. And as I found out tonight, this isn't just arable land. This is high-quality arable land. And one of the arguments that was put before us was that we'll get thirty-five years of benefit of the soil being regenerated if this land goes back into agricultural production. It took hundreds, if not thousands, of years to get our land to the quality it is today. Not thirty-five. You might get a couple of years of row crop agriculture out of it that are better yield, but we'll be back to where we were today, barring changes in technologies and yields, et cetera. And the six hundred and forty acres, that's kind of hard to put into perspective. Like, how big is six hundred and forty acres? So I did some figuring out. It's actually about the size of downtown Cedar Rapids. Maybe a little, you know, downtown Cedar Rapids can be a little bit smaller than that, depending on where you draw the boundaries. But I don't believe that we should be having more single-use land. Uh, it's not... We're not being good stewards, taking land that has one use and giving it another use. There's a lot of potential. Yeah, it's not as cheap. There's not the infrastructure there. There's not a conveniently placed substation with extra capacity. But we can put solar panels on roads and not waste good farmland. We can put solar panels anywhere but where people live, unless you put them above them where they can take advantage of it. Above us, they're out of sight. We won't see them as much. They're at ground level thirteen feet high. That's twice as tall as me when they're fully up. Um, I don't... I don't see that. I don't... I don't live in the Coggan area, um, but I do live near Palo. And I have neighbors that, you know, that's going to affect me. And I'm trying to keep this to the Coggan task. But just a couple of things I want to do. I would like to say I've been a lifelong Iowa resident. I was born in Burlington. I grew up in Iowa City. But I left. I went out east for a few years. I actually lived in northeast Pennsylvania during the Marcellus Shale, um, drilling boom. And a lot of the promises that I heard from, um, Clonera, I also heard from the companies that did the drilling out there. Um, you know, "We'll hire local labor when available. We'll clean up our accidents. We'll right any wrongs." But the local governments, after all this happened, they didn't have the resources to go through the corporate bureaucracies and to make them take action, to follow through on their promises. And I'm afraid that that might happen here. I'm not saying it will. But it's a possibility, and we have to seriously consider that. Um, the one last thing I want to say, and I'm going to address everybody in the room with this. Um, I wish I could turn the microphone around and talk to the people, but, um... I saw... Susquehanna County is where I lived. I saw that community split in half, tore apart, over energy projects like this. Granted, oil projects are completely different than solar projects, but we're still... Granted, oil projects are completely different than solar projects, but we're still going through, it's still energy, it's an energy boom. And somebody's making money and somebody's not. Somebody's walking away, rolling like a fat cat, and somebody's left holding the bag. And we don't want to be that community, we don't want to tear each other apart. Mr. Rogan made a comment that people get followed home when they're in disagreement with projects like this, and that shouldn't be the case. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago for the Palo project with the state representatives, there were people fighting in the parking lot. Does Iowa nice only apply to outsiders, or does it apply to ourselves as well? So let's keep it civil, let's not threaten our neighbors, and let's be better than the people who live out east, because we are. I was an outsider out there, they would, they would not let me in. I don't see that here, whether you're an outsider or not. So let's keep that in mind as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, I believe it might be Deb Yates, or Yato, maybe?
Yates.
Yates, okay, thank you.
Um, most everything I've had is already been said. I do note that in Clonera's application, they note that the largest threat to agricultural production in Iowa is climate change. Corn yields will decline fifteen to fifty percent by 2100. That is a food issue as well as climate change, because that's where it's going to happen. Um, other than that, I'd just like to expand on some of the, expand the picture of what you're seeing of, of farmland. The United States has ten percent of the world's farmland, that's the largest of any country. However, that farmland only covers eighteen percent of the continental US. That leaves eighty-two percent of the United States to put solar panels. There's better places than on the prime farmland you're talking about. Also in Iowa, from two thousand and one to two thousand and sixteen, just fifteen years, a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and twenty acres of farmland was converted away from farm, farming. The Coggin project would convert ten percent of that amount in one year in one county. And we all know there's many, many more proposed solar farms. So I ask you to consider that, to do what's best for all humans and deny that solar can be, can be constructed on this farmland, and it will be needed in the future for the success and the future viability of Lynn County. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Russ Jaeger would be next. Oh, sorry, he said no, sorry. Um, next page, Kendra Graves. Was it maybe, does Kendra want to speak?
Hello, I am Kendra Graves, and I'm with Central Iowa Power Cooperative, um, as has been-
Can you come a little closer to the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
As has been mentioned tonight, we are the optaker of the power coming out of Coggin Solar. Um, we contracted for a hundred percent of the energy and capacity from that facility. Uh, this power is going to be used in Iowa to serve our thirteen members in fifty-eight of Iowa's counties. Um, we are looking to fill a short position that was left with the closure of Duane Arnold, um, Nuclear Center in 2020. So this is one of the projects that we've contracted, um, to fill in that, that open position. Um, we are looking to maintain a diverse portfolio and looking for projects such as Coggin that's close to our load. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next would be Laura Myers, maybe, please correct me if that's wrong.
Good evening, thank you for spending all night with us. Laura Myers, three three seven two sixty-fourth Street Drive, Lot Three, Palo. And I put this on your desk already. We've talked a lot about the good. One of the things that hasn't come up is Lynn County is a soul-smart county, and what that means is you've decided to encourage solar, be it residential and/or utility, and yet there is no place in Lynn County to dispose of or recycle panels. And I've written a board of directors, there's an email included. Why is that important? Well, the Titan spec sheet says that those are universal waste, which means they cannot be just thrown in the trash, they require special handling. If you look at the pictures that I gave you, you see a picture of our pond before the derecho, and yes, I do suffer from derecho PTSD. And then you see a picture of our pond on the tenth of August last year. And that debris that you see in there is from the house that's on the top page there. That's my neighbor Kevin's. He lives a little to the north and across the street, and his entire garage came to visit our pond. We spent the better part of fifteen thousand dollars cleaning that pond out, because insurance does not cover debris, doesn't cover trees, doesn't cover glass. The only time you're going to get coverage from your insurance company is if it takes out a structure. So my question is, under the hazard part here, I would consider solar panels potential hazard, because if we get another tornado or another derecho, are they willing to put in writing that their panels will hold up to whatever Iowa weather is? And if it doesn't, will they pay to clean it up and dispose of it? And if not, I think Lynn County needs to look at making this, us be able to dispose of any panels, because you've got homeowners that have panels on their roofs that are probably coming to term. There needs to be a place locally to dispose of them or recycle them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really picked the wrong day to wear hard-soled shoes. Um, Barry Richter, nine one, nine fifteen DeRoe Street, Jessup. Just one quick comment, it relates to green jobs, which is under, um, F, uh, as far as goals, objectives, and strategies of the comprehensive plan. I, I want to make sure that we think about what green jobs truly are, and green jobs truly are things that relate to the environment. Environmental specialist, civil engineer, environmental health and safety, forester, arbitrist, environmental manager, solar consultant, senior civil engineer, solar PV installer, environmental technician. They are not laborers, they are not, um, carpenters, they are not general contract guys on the job. They are people who should be doing work that directly relate to solar PV and are green jobs. And I really think if we're going to say that that is a category that we've met, that it should be true green jobs, not people mowing the grass, not guys schlepping stuff from point A to point B. Those jobs are valuable and they add value to our P, our laborers, our county, but they're not green jobs in the truest sense of what a green job is. Um, the con, or the developer indicated that they would hire local as available. What does that mean? Does that mean, well, the guys that they brought in from out of state need to fill in three people? So they're going to pick up a few local guys? Is that locals available? What are those local guys going to do? Because they're not going to be the skilled laborers they're going to drop into place. Are they going to train them, put them on, are they going to put them on the cruise long-term? What does that mean? Are they truly going to be green jobs? Because long-term, these are only going to have two to three positions. The management of the electrical, electricity from the panels, if you go and you look at the Wapalo site, you'll notice the signs up on the site, and that'll tell you the numbers that you, that you have to call if there's emergencies. Those aren't local numbers. Those are numbers that are out of state, out of area. So they're not calling local firms in the area to help with that. So it's not even those people that are getting employed locally. So please make sure when you're considering this, are you truly getting green jobs? Are those jobs significant enough to make us meet that criteria? Because at two or three, I don't think that's significant employment for this project. And if they're not training significant people to help develop employment base in this county, then that doesn't meet the criteria for this, uh, category. So thank you very much, appreciate your time. I'm going to clomp back over to my corner again, okay?
Thank you.
Your shoes look nice, though. They look nice.
I believe it's Quinn. I'm assuming the only Quinn in the room, so I won't try for the last name.
Good evening, my name's Quinn Slaven. I'm here representing the Land and Liberty Coalition in Iowa. And, uh, first and foremost, I want to thank you for all of your work on this, giving this project the consideration and the time that it deserves, uh, and I really commend you for all of your service to the community here. Uh, I think this discussion ultimately boils down to the idea of landowner rights, the idea of landowner autonomy. So the ability for a landowner to make decisions for themselves of how to manage their property. If a landowner or a farmer wants to decide when to plant their crops, what to plant, whether or not they should build a structure on their property, that's their choice. They have the autonomy and they have the freedom and the responsibility to manage their property in a way that best suits them. This project is no different. If a landowner wants to participate in it and wants to partner with a developer to have solar panels on their property for any number of reasons, the extra revenue that it brings in for their family, the contribution to regional energy independence, growing energy here and using it here, or preventing urban sprawl. Because while this project, you know, gives that land some time out of production for thirty-five years, once this project is done, as it's been said, it can be easily restored back to a farmable state. That's not the case if a parking lot is put over it, or a supermarket, or, uh, a housing development, or anything like that. And while this project is there for thirty-five years, a parking lot isn't going to be built over it. So in, uh, some ways, you know, this is preserving farmland for generations to come to ensure that decades down the road, there is land ready to be used and is protected for farming purposes. So again, I want to thank you for the, for the time tonight, and, uh, I appreciate all of your work on this issue.
And I believe that was everyone who had said on the paper that they wanted to speak. Charlie, did we have any online comments that should be added?
We, we do have one comment that came in by email. I will read it off. It is from Kyle Phillips at eleven Roxbury Drive Northwest in Cedar Rapids. It says, "In reviewing staff's report, it is clear that the Coggin proposed solar utility facility meets or will be able to meet all standards for approval. As such, concerns do not rise to cause for this commission to deny the application. The Lynn County planning staff would not recommend approval if the application violated the comprehensive plan in any way. In addition, I believe, uh, goal one of the livable community's element of the Lynn County Comprehensive Plan goals, protect and enhance the health and safety of all Lynn County residents, should be marked as supported by this proposal. The science is clear that if mankind does not take immediate steps to address climate change, it will present dangers for residents in the near future. I agree with staff's recommendation and support approval of this application." That was our only virtual comment, so I am going to pass the questions I have written down from people to our chair, and then you can address those either to staff or the applicant.
Um, I do want to, uh, open up, if there was anyone who either I missed or did not put your name down that has not had a chance for public comment, I do want to invite you to come up to the microphone at this time. Um, so please go ahead and come up. There's a gentleman right here, please state your name, address, and make your comment.
Kyle Beaton Bender, thirty-three eighty-five Buchanan, Delaware Avenue. My pit, my farm was on every picture you showed of that. And just a couple of things, I'm not here to tell anybody what they can do with ground they own. I farm too, but I do think it's going to make my farm not worth as much. But I don't understand how somebody can be, be going to do a project for a hundred and fifty to three hundred million dollars and he don't know where he's getting the money at. I just don't believe that. I don't know what you guys think of that. And the other thing I don't believe is when he says if somebody wants out of it, that's already in it, they can get out of it. I don't believe that either. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else in the room who wanted to come up?
I'm Wally Taylor, I live at twenty-two, uh, twenty-two hundred South Thirty-first in Marion. I heard discussion earlier about decommissioning costs and how it's going to be paid for. Uh, it looks to me like from the plan that was submitted, uh, that Clonera hopes that in, in twenty years or thirty-five years, there's going to be a market to recycle those solar panels and, and all the equipment. That may or may not be true. We don't know. And they're gambling that they can pay for the decommissioning after the fact, rather than what they should be doing is paying into a fund during the twenty or thirty-five years that the project is in operation. That's how nuclear plants have to do it. They have to have a decommissioning fund. So I would suggest that, other than your recommendation, if you recommend, um, that, the resorting be granted, that condition be that Clonera set aside and pay into a decommissioning fund. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was there anyone else in the room who had not had a chance to speak? Okay, we will now address the questions and comments. And is there someone from, uh, uh, Clonera who could also come up to the microphone? Because I do think some of these will be more easily answered by the applicant versus staff. Um, so, and actually, I would say the first question on here, um, okay, will Coggin solar address bird collisions? I would also expand upon that and also ask, have you had that at other sites, and how do you address it at other sites?
Uh, I can't speak to whether or not we've had them at other sites, as I'm not one of the operations people. I will say that there is mounting scientific evidence that shows that the lake effect is a non-issue for migratory waterfowl. And some of the most recent research coming out has demonstrated that it actually is having the opposite effect. Uh, we'd be happy to provide some additional information on that as possible. I think one thing to consider is that from a distance, it looks like a lake, but as you get closer to the project, the ground coverage ratio of solar panels to not solar panels is actually one to three. So for every row of solar panels you have, you have twice as much equal space that's open in between rows. So I think up close, the lake effect is highly mitigated and only looks like a lake from afar.
Okay. Um, and this, I don't know if this could be either for you, either of you, I guess, or maybe both. Will, who will clean up the panels if they blow onto adjacent properties, also regarding storm damage with that?
I'll take a stab at that first. So the responsibility of cleaning up those panels would be the applicant's. I don't believe we have a specific condition that states it will be the applicant's responsibility to clean up panels if they should blow onto adjacent properties. I wouldn't be opposed to putting a condition like that into, into the staff report or into any recommendation met, met by the Planning and Zoning Commission. There was a question that is at the end of your list that is related, um, that was asking whether or not Clonera would be able to put in writing if they will commit to cleaning up those panels, which if we, I think should be addressed to the Clonera applicant and could be covered by a condition that, uh, Clonera is responsible for cleanup of those panels.
I think pending review of such a condition, we would be amenable to, to that. I will say that the, the project is also being designed to withstand wind speeds of up to a hundred and forty miles an hour.
Okay. I believe the derecho was about that. I believe the derecho was about a hundred I believe the Dratchell was about 160, wasn't it? So, okay. So what is Lynn County doing to obtain financial assurance for decommissioning? Charlie?
Yeah, that was a really good question. So the decommissioning plan does state financial assurance will be provided based on an agreement between the developer and the county. The two options discussed have been a performance bond or a cash and escrow account. One of those has not been decided on as of yet. I don't think it would be unreasonable to require that that method of financial assurance be decided on before the Board of Supervisors votes on the project. But if financial assurance is required as part of the plan, it has just not been designated whether that would be a bond or a cash in an escrow account at this point.
Could the county become a landowner responsible for project cleanup? Charlie?
Could the county be responsible for project cleanup?
Yes.
Potentially, and I think that's what the decommissioning plan is intended to address, that should the owner of the site, whether it's Clinera or another company in the future, become non-responsive for one reason or another, that the county would then commence cleanup or decommissioning activities. Questions about the salvage value and whether or not it's accurate have been brought up. I think those are fair questions. Because utility scale solar projects are so new, there's not a whole lot of examples of sites being decommissioned. The salvage value included in the decommissioning plan, though, I will say, has been looked over by Clinera's hired consultants, by our hired consultants. It does meet industry standards. We don't have any reason to doubt the value of that, the salvage value in the plan. We are requiring it to be audited by a licensed appraiser experienced with these projects on a continuing basis. Did I address your question, or did I get off too much on a tangent there?
I think you did. Yes, so basically, the county could become the landowner. You see that as a good thing, because then the cleanup could happen, instead of ending up just nebulous.
I wouldn't say it's a good thing. I think the county becoming the responsible party for the cleanup would be a last resort and something that we would not want to do. But we are putting plans in place that if it comes to that, we are able to do it.
Okay. I think, going back to the bond a little bit, why is a performance bond for decommissioning plan not required?
So I would say that funds are required. It would be an accurate statement to say that it hasn't been decided what form those funds will take, which is a fair concern and a fair question, that that could be something that we figure out before the Board of Supervisors actually takes action on the project.
Okay, where can panels be recycled and how much does it cost for recycling? And I think you addressed some of that. You would probably be the best person to respond, maybe?
Yeah, I believe there's 23 recycling centers currently in the United States that accept and recycle solar PV modules. The closest one is in Wisconsin. I don't know the cost offhand to recycle the modules.
Is there a net cost? Or do they do that because they make funds off of the recycling? Like, do you have to pay to take it there? Like, if I take a television to the landfill? Or if I take my tablet to the landfill, they make money from doing that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Probably Charlie, who is responsible for oversight of the project in the future?
There will be two main agencies responsible for oversight of the project. The first would be the Iowa Utilities Board. As a utility project, it would be governed by the Iowa Utilities Board. The second is Lynn County. And we're the most local, we're likely the most responsive. So we would be responsible for oversight of all of the conditions in the staff report, all of the, making sure the plans submitted by the developer are adhered to. Much of the responsibility of the day-to-day operations and how this project works would be the responsibility of the county to ensure.
Okay. I would say this is a question for Clinera. Has Clinera talked to adjacent landowners regarding tile locations?
We have reached out, both directly and indirectly, to the neighboring landowners to ascertain the location of their tiles and have not received a response today.
Can the details of the peony manufacturing be shared?
The details of the panel manufacturing?
Yeah, I think there was a screen, right?
We would be able to provide the specification sheet on the project. And I believe we have already with the county, but we can certainly do that.
And is there a list of potentially hazardous chemicals used in production of?
I think actually just today, I provided Charlie with the Bill of Materials that provides all of the materials that go into the manufacture of the panels. None of those are hazardous materials.
And I'll confirm, I did receive that list today. The Bill of, you call that the Bill of Materials? Yes, and it lists the components that are in the panels. So I can put that up on our county website for people to take a look at.
Okay, that was the ones that you had written. I just wanted to go through my notes and see if I had any other items. I guess, Charlie, can you address? A lot of people expressed concerns about the farmland use. So can we go back and address that in more detail or clarify?
Concerns of taking the farmland out of production? So it will definitely take farmland out of production for up to 35 years. We're attempting to balance that by having measures put in an agricultural impact mitigation plan that would lower potential damages to the soil on the site and to adjacent farming operations by avoiding or repairing any damages to tiles. And the other part of that is a vegetation management plan, where through the life of the project, we're requiring 70% of the site to be seeded with short-stature prairie and native seedings to stabilize that soil and help build that soil health. It won't do 100 years of regeneration, it will do a little bit. The intent is that the project, after 35 years, goes back to agricultural production. We are putting in conditions that the zoning district expires. The Board of Supervisors in 35 years, I can't predict what they will be, but if they do want to have this use continue at that time, they would have to go through another rezoning process. It wouldn't be an automatic renewal.
So what would be the difference in considering this type of development versus having housing, industrial, commercial, that kind of development in regards to maintaining farmland?
Those type of developments are more permanent. We don't put measures into, say, a residential subdivision, a commercial development, an industrial development, that plans on having that development disappear in 35 years. So that is the main difference that staff sees on agricultural production in this case versus other types of development, that this is planned to go away, whereas those other types of developments are planned to stay in perpetuity.
A couple of people addressed fire issues or concerns, and I'm not sure how much of that, I mean, and I don't know if either of you can specifically answer that. I guess one question I would have about that is, have the, has Coggan Fire that's responsible for this area had some conversations? Has that been discussed at all? Do they get training on what to do? But then also, do the panels burn? Is it dangerous? Like, what, how does that work if that happens? And that might be both or either.
Yeah, I'm not familiar if Coggan Fire Department or Fire District has had conversations with the developer or not. We met with the Emergency Management Department in Lynn County, and they reviewed the plans and the spec sheets, and they did not have concerns about requiring any additional plans beyond what the applicant has committed to of working out a response plan with the Coggan Fire District and the Lynn County Sheriff. And as to, you know, how combustible are the panels? I can't answer that, I'm not sure.
We have not reached out to the Coggan Fire District directly yet. We will do so pending approval of the project to coordinate, as Charlie mentioned, on an emergency management plan. As to the flammability of the panels, I think they're largely inert. I'm not a scientist. I don't know, Mike, if you have anything that you would want to add on that point?
Can you come up to the microphone? Some people will definitely not be able to hear you. Please, thank you.
My name's Michael Gallego. I'm the Vice President of Operations for Clinera. We operate about 25 solar facilities throughout the US. We have not had a fire on one of our facilities before. I'm sure there have been fires in other facilities, but we have not had one yet. We do take precautions. Some of those precautions are in the design of the facility. We reach out to local fire codes. We have to build roads for access aisles. We have a facility in Idaho that has street signs on it, so that the local fire department could, would know if someone was hurt in the field, they'd know which road to go down to find them. You know, we cut barriers around our facilities in California so we don't get wildlife, or wildland grass fires come up to them. We have fire tanks on some facilities in the event that a fire truck needs to replenish 500 to 1,000 gallons worth of water into their system. So inverter skids typically have fire extinguishers on them. I mean, we basically follow county and local codes as required for the fire suppression for these systems. So that's typically what we do.
Has there been preventative and mitigating measures put into the plan for this specific plan? I know you've talked about the barriers in California and things of that nature. Have there been specific ones tailored to the Coggan Plan?
Not that I know of. I do not know whether or not the county has reviewed our plans in regards to fire protection, or if the county fire marshal has looked at it and said, "This is what we need." Other than what was represented tonight, that's as far as I know. Those plans have not been submitted for a building permit or anything like that, because the project is not permitted yet.
Are there any standard operating, as far as large-scale solar farms? Are there any kind of standard operating procedures when it comes to fire protection and mitigation?
Well, some of the things that we have are what's required by code, right? So fire extinguishers, we would typically put in what we call a SKID zone. A SKID is typically where there's a transformer or an inverter. We would have typically a fire extinguisher in those areas. During construction, we typically will have fire trucks, or not fire, excuse me, not fire trucks, water trucks on-site in the event that there was a fire. You know, you could hit that fire area pretty quickly. And then the roads, you know? And when we talk about these emergency management plans, you know, our contractors typically have a onsite health supervisor, and there's a safety plan that's generated for each project. And that safety plan includes if you have a fire or you have an injury on-site. And so those, you know, that typically, when we have a project being built or we have a project going into operations, we will have the local fire officials come to the site, tour the site, and give us additional input on what they would like to see. You know, whether that be a knock box on a gate or a facility that they can get in easier, where they want a double lock on the gate. Or, like I was talking about earlier, if there's a requirement for a road to be 25 feet or 35 feet, or they feel like they need to have a turnaround of 45 feet, whatever that is, is typically how our sites are designed, to make sure that they have that access accordingly.
And I'll make a note on code. So Lynn County has adopted the full set of building codes, international building codes. Our inspectors use those when they evaluate plans. Fire code is part of that, but that inspection typically does not take place until just before construction and the permit fee is paid. So that type of examination of, an application of fire code, electrical code, building permit or building code would not take place until after the project was approved, if it is approved and the permit fee has been paid to start that review process.
So basically, they won't be able to look to see if it's up to code until the plan's already made, without taking into consideration what the local fire station may want or thinks best practice for that area?
Yes, and I would say, I would say they won't be able to see if it's up to code until they have a more, a full, complete, final plan set to evaluate, to see if it meets fire code. They would not do that evaluation, yes, until they were ready to build. That's not to say that a emergency response plan, irrespective or separate from fire code, couldn't be developed beforehand, but that, the fire code inspection is not done till just before construction phase.
One of the gentlemen who spoke talked about a set aside for land. Can you go into that a little bit, if you know about that, Charlie? And how would that be similar or different than this? Where they're not farming land for a period of time? No, it's the set aside I'm talking about.
CRP, like?
It's conservation, but I don't know what the initials are.
Yeah, and that is outside of planning and development. Landowners who do want to set aside land in a conservation reserve program will work with the local NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service office, to get that plan put in place. And that is a way of resting the land, so to speak, not putting it into production, but planting some other type of cover crop that can help, you know, again, build soil nutrients, stabilize the soil.
So in some ways, it's very similar to what they would be doing here with the end product?
The concept of using cover crops to stabilize and build soil health is similar, yes.
Do any commission members have any other questions?
I've got one that was partly touched on. So decommissioning plan, it mentions, assuming the 1.5% inflation factor. We know that's gone, right? So what, now does this whole thing get like tweaked? Obviously, 1.5 average over the 35 years, I would imagine. But do we go back and look at these plans and say, what, I forget, was it four, six percent? So I was just curious about that.
Well, I believe inflation is transitory at the moment. But that aside, I believe that the requirements of the county are that we reevaluate and address the plan on a one, five, one, two, and five-year basis to make sure that the plan is adequate and that the bonding requirements are covering the cost, including an adjustment to inflation.
Madam Chairwoman, I say we table this to the January meeting and do the lateness of the hour and also all the stuff you gotta go through and figure out whatever thing, which way we want to vote.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Do you want to do any deliberation first, or just?
We can deliberate after, right?
Okay, I'm gonna pull up the order of the meeting, just so it's up there, but... That's true, you do have the motion, so.
We have to at least address the motion, I think. Do we have a second at this time for that motion? Okay, would, not hearing a second at this time, that motion fails. The next thing on our agenda is actually commission deliberation. Would the commission like to deliberate?
I guess I'll start. I appreciate everybody coming.
Can you move it a little closer?
Yeah.
I can't hear you hardly.
Thanks to all the public that spoke and came. You know, a reminder, we're all volunteers and not paid or elected people, so we're just here out of the goodness of our hearts. But I definitely hear the private property arguments. I'm a big private property guy. But kind of the bedrock of planning and zoning is separating incompatible land uses. So that brings us here tonight to hear all these arguments. I think it's great. I kind of start off neutral in these things and just try and keep an open mind all throughout, reading all the documents, hearing all the comments, getting the questions. I still get hung up on Standard B, the detrimental to A, so I still need some convincing on that, but that's kind of where I sit right now.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to mention too, you know, I see a lot of folks, and I'm from a farm family, and I think Kyle touched on it, right? Who are we to say what someone else can do with their property? what someone else can do with their property? If, you know, if someone wanted to put up a hog building, that's their property, right? We really don't, you know, as, as private citizens, we don't really have a say. If, if we wanted to say, we could have bought it. Ultimately, that's kind of the, the toss-up, right? But...
Okay, so it's not, it's, this is deliberation of the commission?
Sure. I mean, and I, I, I hear what he says, right? You know, I've, I've lived in a house that's closest neighbor was a hog building. It's just, it's one of those things, unfortunately. It's, it's, it's how life goes. But kind of like Brock mentioned, I think touching on standard for approval B up there, I don't, I don't know, I guess it's not up there anymore, but...
Can you actually put the standards up?
Um, you know, I don't, I don't think we can argue that it's not detrimental to A. Now, I, I think the argument could be said, 640 acres, no matter what the CSR is, I think is a drop in the bucket. Anyone who says otherwise, I know people who farm five times that by themselves. So like, 640 acres percentage-wise is not a lot. Obviously, it, it is, it is high CSR ground, and I, I certainly do think that, you know, when we look at all those, as someone else mentioned, we do have to look at all of them. And when I look at those up there, you know, I do see standard for approval B, and I, you know, I look at the board and say, can we in good conscience say that this, you know, isn't detrimental? Semantics ultimately, right? But, you know, this is setting standards for how we're gonna go forward, and we want to make sure that we are kind of walking in lockstep with the comprehensive plan and the standards for approval.
I think kind of building on what you're talking about, we talk about how, yes, it's a drop in the bucket compared to what? Compared to Lynn County, compared to the state, compared to the country? We are here for just Lynn County, and so we have to compare it to the size of Lynn County and the amount of, sorry, and I'm loud enough as it is.
No, no.
And the amount of land that we have that is farmable, that is valuable. So that percentage increases quite a bit compared to that drop in the bucket. So maintaining that we are ensuring that we are looking out for the community. So, and not just the big, big picture.
I mean, percentage-wise, it is. If we're talking about percentage of Lynn County, it's, it, that is certainly a drop in the bucket.
And, and I would say on that idea of, you know, I certainly...
It's definitely a different...
Certainly landowners have rights. Part of the reason why we exist is to help to mitigate that anything a particular landowner is doing is not overly concerning to the neighbors or going to be problematic to the neighbors. So that's certainly something that we have to be considering, because if that was never a concern, there wouldn't be a Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, that's part of the reason why we exist. We create government structures because there's a problem, not because we just want government structures. So I do think that has to be considered as part of this process. I do like the idea of, I mean, I think there are some other pieces to this that I would like to see, including having a condition to have land there, cleanup panels, if there is storm damage, and no matter where the panels are, including if they're on other people's property, because I think that that is a valid concern, that it's one thing to even have a tree or even a garage. You probably know what to do with those things, but having solar panels is not something everybody's gonna even have any idea what to do with on their property. I do think having that financial assurance required before the Board of Supervisors were to review this is a good recommendation that helps to protect the county and all of us in perpetuity. Addressing the fire concerns on some level, I don't know how large the Coggan Fire Department is. We are, you know, we've had developments in other areas, but we're further away from some of the other professional fire departments, like the Cedar Rapids Fire Department that would have additional staffing that might be able to manage something like this. I would be interested in knowing how much of the crap land that they are proposing to turn into this type of energy production is already being utilized for energy production. You know, the money is in ethanol right now, so if this crap land is being used to produce for ethanol, it's really just displacing it to a different energy projec, production. It's not taking it out of food craps. So, I mean, all of those are definitely thoughts and questions that I think are valid to be addressed in this. I do think that this is greatly different development than housing, than anything else that's going to be a permanent change to the land. And resting the land for 35 years, while that seems like a long time, and I do the math, and I'm gonna be old, I hope I'm still around, it's, it's not a long time when you consider the land. And truly, in some of the reports, it talked about, due to farming, there is likely arsenic and lead in the land already. So that is, you know, I, I don't think that any of the, those are very bad chemicals, and as far as I know, none of the chemicals that are in the solar panels are going to be more dangerous than what has already been used there. We also know that our water quality in the state of Iowa is very poor, and resting 640 acres will improve, improve the water quality due to not using all of the chemicals on that for those years.
I think the only question I originally had here was about the suitability of taking some high-quality farm ground out of production, but I think, in my case, I think it's been answered that there is adequate measures in place, that it will be returned to farm ground in the future. So that concern of mine has been pretty well addressed.
I think my concern with, with that portion of it, though, is, been shared by a lot of the people here, though, is that, you know, the guarantees are predicated on things that we cannot predict. You know, the, the life of these panels, we know for now, but again, we go back to the 15, 20 years from now, what's, what are we gonna get back for these panels, right? And, and, and how are we going to decommission them in a way that is appropriate? And nothing against Clean Era, but a lot of companies, renewable and otherwise, don't necessarily survive, given certain economic settings. And what happens if it doesn't? And, and then who's stuck dealing with it? And is that gonna be us, the community, the taxpayers?
So you agree that those financial assurances being required is essential?
Yeah, absolutely.
To make sure that the taxpayers for today and, and 35 years are not responsible?
Yes, 100%.
Okay, so we have three options for what we do tonight. We could recommend approval. Well, actually, technically, I guess we could have four options, unless Charlie cracks me. We could recommend approval as-is. We could potentially add additional conditions. We could deny, or we could table it for a future meeting if there are additional details or information that we would like to have prior to taking a vote. So I guess I would ask, is there a motion?
Yeah, just for the sake of discussion and voting, I'll move that we approve based on the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to approve based on the conditions of approval in the staff report.
I'm not voting for approval.
Okay, and now, sorry, it's on the, on your projector, right? Do we have anything other discussion that we would like to have before we take a roll call vote?
I had a motion on the floor, and no, and nothing was done with it, so...
It wasn't seconded. It died. Your motion died on the floor, because there was no second. There is now a motion on the floor to approve or pass it based on the conditions in the staff report. Charlie, I would ask that those other items that we were talking about, having the condition to have Clean Era cleanup panels on anyone's property, that that would be added as a condition?
Okay, and if I remember correctly, those conditions were to include language that responsibility for cleanup of any debris caused by a storm would be the applicant's, and to specify the financial assurance measure used as part of the decommissioning plan. Am I forgetting anything there?
I think you answered the fire concerns, and that it will be addressed, but just not at this point. Is that correct, my correct understanding of that?
It, it will be reviewed for conformance to fire code. There will also be a plan developed with the Coggan Fire District.
And so those are steps that just haven't taken place, but they will be required?
Yes.
Okay. So does that modify our motion, Charlie?
You, you could do a motion to, modify the motion to include those conditions. I'm just bringing the mic over here, so Jesse can have it.
So then I would, I would make that motion to modify the motion to include those two additional conditions regarding cleanup on anyone's property and financial assurance. Is there a second for that motion?
No second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any other discussion by commission members at this time? Okay, may I have a roll call vote by the secretary, please?
Deterbeck?
No.
Maxwell?
No.
Dubois?
Aye.
Greenwich?
Nay.
Wagner?
Aye.
Coontz?
No.
Eilers?
Aye.
Motion passes four, three.
Did it pass?
What? Oh, I, I might have been wrong there.
I think you heard a nay instead of an aye.
Oh. Okay, motion fails four, three. Tina, at this point, we can just treat this as a regular meeting. Do any staff comments or commission comments related to things not on this case? I don't have any other staff comments, so, well, I guess I do have one staff comment. We will be sending this to the Board of Supervisors with a negative recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do not have a date set up at this point. Tentatively, we are looking at December 13th. I have to confirm schedules with all three supervisors, and then make sure this meeting space is available. As soon as we know the schedule for the Board of Supervisors meetings, we will make that available on our website, on our Facebook page, and we will send out surrounding property owner notification letters.
Okay, any other commission comments? Okay, seeing that there is no other meeting or business, this meeting is adjourned. Hello? Okay, we have a procedural issue. We need commission members to remain and have a seat. Go grab George. George! Run, run! He's out, he's going out the door. Run and grab George!
Our procedural issue is they never actually made a motion to deny. They just shot down the motion to approve, so a motion for one action...
So their motion to approve was, was, didn't happen, but there's no motion to deny?
Yeah, there needs to be an official action.
So there is, there has to be, that failed, so we have no successful motion.
Motion to approve.
So we have no successful motion, sorry.
I will motion, I will motion to deny.
We, we have to go back in.
Someone getting him? He's just fucking out the door. Wrong Charlie. He just fucked out the door.
No, just run after him!
He's been here all day.
Run after him, sir. Well, that was good that John pointed that out, because he's... Well, now we have to have a motion for something else. Whatever, whatever. I think we will have to, we'll have to come back together, yes.
I feel like we could call George. He's, he's been on the phone this morning. Is he coming? He doesn't have a choice.
Well, he doesn't have a choice.
He's coming, there he is.
He's not.
Oh, Charlie, that's okay. Maybe if we, maybe if we could send him a text message.
Is George coming? Okay, we will reconvene the meeting. I have 10:14, I think? 10:13? Okay, so the motion that was on the floor failed. We need a new motion.
I motion we deny.
I second that motion.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote from the secretary, please? Recording secretary?
I don't know what I'm voting on.
You're voting on whether, you're voting on to deny?
Yes.
Your microphone's off.
Okay, so that's Maxwell. Yeah, I don't have one. Wagner?
Aye.
Dubois?
Nay.
Eilers?
Aye. We have so denied, so denied.
Deterbeck?
Yes.
Coontz?
Yes.
Greenwich?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, seeing there is no additional business, we will close the meeting.